So my kids back when I get home.
Now you guys only have to have ten conferences.
They're all enjoy.
Okay, seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting, the planning board with order. The first case on the agenda is case number twenty-three. Seven consideration of request from Acadia Energy LLC slash AE Turkey Lane LLC. Heaviest Engineering LLC is the agent for conditional use permit for installation of a nine hundred and ninety-five. KWAC commercial solar array in the rural zone located at zero Turkey Lane, I believe that's somewhere in the two hundred. On town map four lot thirty-seven. Is there someone here to present on this case? Please identify yourself and.
Hey, doing? My name is Shane, I go on with ABS Engineering, my own company, and I've been helping Academy Energy on both this project and the next project. So I'll do is I'll just start out by just kind of a real summary of the project. And. Project current Turkey Lane, Turkey Lane is right here, North Faro right here, basically come in. First page gravel section of road. So here Turkey Lane right here and or frozen is a third road. The area is approximately four acres of. I come off road, then people, the ground, there'll be a platform down there and then exactly over again. The grid, the area will be fenced in for spirit of the last minutes. You can see they bring three beautiful three lines and all the area right here. Pride is a button, there's a small frame here, plenty of buttons here, there's plenty of buttons here, front four here. And all of some others here that will be impacted.
Hopefully let me see what you're doing, if I had some questions on that part, I'm sorry, I know that they want to see too. A week I haven't, I could pass my map around if you guys want.
So right here, these, these two wetlands here, they'll be cleared, but they won't be broken graded. All these other wetlands here, those will stay, so this is the tree line right here around the, around the perimeter, okay?
So, so you don't have to do it, you're just going to clear on it?
Yes, yeah, we're just clearing, well, would you like, they call it utility clearing, they just go in there with that machine, kind of like on the side of the highway? Or they just take the, the vegetation off, so don't grade any of them.
Oh, the burnable pools and whatever in there, stay there?
They do, yep.
That's okay, I guess.
Yeah, so we also have permits into the DEP, this one here has a tier one natural resource protection and permit. And that's the DEP and that deals with wetlands, the reason we have to have that is because of the clearing that we're doing. So that deals with the clearing and we try, the solar farms will try not to grub and grade most of the array because it's just. Most of these arrays follow the contours of land, so it's not really necessary and more impacts to the wetlands if you're grabbing grade. So we just, we decided you don't need to do that, just, just clear the trees, so, and there's a, there's a shady reason for that, too.
So these are rays are going to go right through that wetland?
Right through, they'll go, they'll go through, so this pot, this bottom one went here, this little finger, they, they won't be in that. But there will be some array posts in this, this wetland here.
Yep. The DEP is okay with that?
That's an allowable use in wetlands here.
Do you have the permits from them yet?
We don't, no, we have an acceptance from them.
So they've, they've accepted it, if you just don't have the written permit?
Correct, okay, yeah.
Do they use?
It actually was the review process.
Have acceptance of the application?
Correct, right, yes.
Alright, not, not the, not a permit?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. So they're, they're processing currently?
Yes, okay, yeah, thank you. And also along this is a, is a firm of our growth stormwater, and again, that's a, that's one of the lower level tier permits that they have for stormwater. And that's just due to, you know, disturbance. And that's been submitted, a decom plan and permit has also been submitted to the DEP for their review, but that's all under, early under their review. I believe that's a sixty to ninety day review process.
To say in the forest, what's around the forest, like what roads, I don't know where it is in town, Turkey Lane, I tried to look online and to blow it up. There's pretty many, I'm so smart out, I couldn't read what is around.
Uh, multiple prior year would, but on the location map here, it's a lot of city, but I'm coming down through the two and two here. It's coming through town, so the private site is over here, and it's in that rural side there.
You want to?
Yep, and you take a, and that's what we do, you take a right on to. Well, there's already the whole most strong and then away comes the turkey.
He wants to see them? No, he said where.
Okay, we have any questions from the planning board?
I got a couple.
Good, sure. First off, our ordinance is pretty clear that it needs to be a fifty foot vegetated buffer all around except for the access road. In your current plan, you have a turnaround in the access road, that's not allowed. Also, just to be clear, that needs to be a fifty foot vegetated buffer all the way around except for the access road. So that turnaround can be inside the fenced area, but not outside, not in that fifty foot vegetated buffer.
The ordinance says that the, this turnaround has to be inside the fence.
It says the only thing that's allowed not to be in the vegetated buffer is the access road, not the turnaround.
Okay.
So that's all it says, so for that, you know, that we'd have to change, we'd have to cut that off. So my second question, I don't know if you want me jumping around, Ed, but.
I'm just gonna make some notes, but.
That's fine, yeah, make some notes, so I said, you know, that, that turnaround is number one. Number two, I think your decommissioning is substantially low, so I think the, I think it'd be nice to get. We've asked this of others to make sure to get a quote from a local builder, a local vendor, general contractor, maybe two. To make sure that those numbers, I realize there's a state template, the state template is probably two or three times low. Based on standard rates for hauling, removing, removing material, revegetating, all of those kind of requirements, there's not vegetation here, I'm sorry, but. Restoring the ground back to its original state, removing all the wires, jacking with the concrete, disposing of the concrete. You've got it all spelled out nicely, I just think it's substantially low at, at forty thousand dollars, I think that's, that's well under, so. Be nice to get a couple of quotes, we're not asking you to say that, to the, to the penny or anything like that, I just think those numbers are very low.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, so just real quick, so I was part of, we did the engineering services for Fox Love. And that was an, an issue for that project as well that came through, our initial estimate was forty thousand or forty-six thousand for that. Array, and that was a two mega lot array, we went back and looked at that very hard again, just to make sure that we were, and I've done a couple of dozen of these so far. And this always kind of comes up as a, as an issue per se, so that one we revised and then she came back with almost, I think it was ninety-six or ninety-nine thousand dollar value. Or again, for a two meg system, and this one's a one meg system, so. I think we're right in that ballpark, the only other thing I'll say is it may be a little bit low, the DEP. Requires us every five years for the developer to update their decom estimate, until then. So there are some checks and balances, and if that needed to be something that was brought to the town for these projects to. I don't see why that would be an issue, so that when this does come to decom, those numbers are a little more realistic, so.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, that, I completely understand the state process and that's absolutely correct, but I don't want to start low. Right, it's okay if we end up readjusting things like that, I understand building costs are probably a little bit elevated right now compared to where they were a couple of years ago, but. The fact is, we don't know where they're going to go in the future, and we don't know if you're going to get happily installed and go bankrupt. And all of that equipment is going to, all those posts and all that system is going to be there, we're hoping that's not the case, but we're saying that's the idea of this plan. Is that it can actually have the funds to go in and have the town hold the funds so they can then go restore that back to what it was. So that's really what our assurance is, is to make sure we don't start low and say, oh, we'll reassess it five years. I'd rather start right to begin with, and I feel like that's a little bit low, that's my judgment, but. That's why I said if you had a local estimate, I understand there's national crews that do this, there's national pricing. But again, they're not necessarily going to drive to Winford Main and do that without charging extra for moving their equipment, moving their, moving their, moving their systems. So an actual site evaluation and a set of numbers would be, would be nice to go off. Um, my third question was about the burnable pools and the wetlands and. I was a little confused by the key because there's things like wetland bill on here in red, I'm on C one. Which is, I think that might be the something else, that is C one, okay, so in the key, it, it, it labels wetland bill. But I don't see that color anywhere?
No.
Okay, so.
The only wetland fill that DEP says is fill or fence post, so the only wetland fills you have here are actual fence posts or array posts.
Okay, yep, and on, and, and again, on this map, you have the hashed green as delineated wetlands. Um, and I don't think that's, maybe it is, I didn't think that was necessarily correct, is that all delineated wetlands of the northeast corner?
This right here?
Yeah, it is, okay, that one is correct, but it changes on the other, on C two. That's where I was kind of confused is, there's a yellow area as shown on this map that's not in the key on C one, on C two. There's, like on my version of C two, there's no yellow and there's a purple line shown, which looks like it might be delineating a wetland, I'm not sure, but it's not in the key. So I didn't know what that was. And the yellow area, I didn't see identified anywhere on either of these two to say what it was. I know you explained that it's going to be vegetation removed, but that was something that we didn't, we didn't have knowledge of, you know, prior, so it's nice to know what things are going and where.
Yeah, that's, that's what that is, that is the yellow area just delineated that those are the weapons that'll actually be impacted with vegetation.
Okay, okay.
Probably put a key down a little better over here.
Okay, there was just some confusion that everybody followed those changes potentially. Um, so those were some concerns, just trying to make sure we understand the maps. Um, and I think my final question for now anyways, Ed, was just about the burnable pools, the environmental study, who actually conducted your evaluation of burnable pools? To evaluate that that's a significant versus the non-significant weapon, I mean, it said very clearly in the state guidance that they do not, their mapping does not define. Or identify significant, significant burnable pools and significant wetlands. Except for, and you have to do a local site assessment, except for large areas, I think, I think the mapping goes down to one acre scale. Obviously, this project is a much smaller project, you know, if it was in the middle of a mass of wetland, that would be very different. So it says it has to do a local site assessment, so I'm like, who did your local site assessment, I didn't see a letter or a report from them. Maybe I missed it, I just didn't see it in your.
Is that a requirement, I'm just curious, and maybe I missed it, because it had been done since I put this in. And I really studied, studied it, but is that a requirement for the submission, I know it's a requirement for the NERPA permit that was submitted. Maybe I missed that, but.
Yeah, we know it's, it's not in our town ordinance because it's in the NERPA permit, but I just figured, okay, well. What, where is that information, that documentation in the package?
Yeah, and so I can certainly supply that information, we had watershed resource consultants, they're at Orange. And they're licensed and site evaluated.
Okay, so if you could include their, their reference in their report, that would be really helpful. Because we'd be able to evaluate, okay, that they're, you know, a firm that does this, they said this is what's going on, these are not classified, it's significant based on the state guidelines, that kind of thing. Um, you know, they can give us an executive summary and then you could put the rest of the report in, but that would be really helpful to at least get a letter from them and saying, you know, give us an executive summary of what their evaluation was. That seem reasonable, just the.
I mean, I can, I can supply the report, the whole report.
And that's, and that's why you could definitely send that to Don so we have it, but I would say just making sure that we get an executive summary and get a letter form. From them to say, hey, we evaluated this site, here's what we found, here's what's going on, here's where those areas are delineated and why. And then what we're proposing to do and that, what the state guidelines are, so that we're all clear that you're not. Doing something that you shouldn't be doing, that makes, makes sense, that's sort of what we're here for, so, okay. So I'll see if anybody else has a question.
I do, of course I do. Yeah, I know. Um, I just want to, I'm looking at your view shed analysis and I just want to confirm because it's not marked here, I'm good, I made the assumption that. Kind of hard to see, um, I am assuming that this right here is not this stuff, this little red area.
Okay.
So that's something I'd like to see if you can confirm because that looks like it's very visible from there, in that case.
No, this guy you said, is it?
Yes. Yes.
Label, I believe it's labeled on one of the maps.
Is it, I looked, I couldn't find it.
The, the analysis was run by the sub consultant. That Academy Energy used, so I can certainly bring any questions to them.
Okay.
I was somewhat part of a view show analysis in the previous project I helped with in Winford. They seem to be a lot more detailed in this one than the previous ones I've been part of. But I can verify that.
It's a separate map, you gotta look back, that gives you the orientation of the town, the roads are in the same place, Mount Cusco there.
Right.
So I'm just saying it shows you, you know, that just, so you know where you are, it's right over here.
Yeah, so it's kind of, that probably wouldn't be this little bit.
It's either on, it's either that.
So you want to know if that's actually part in the view shed?
If that's in the view shed, yeah.
I think it is, well, yeah, because this is all of the town boundary. So, and it's close to mom, if I'm not mistaken. I'm, if I'm looking at properly, and I guess he can confirm that, I think this is the red dots, so that there's. You absolutely can. Yeah. I think that's all I have to say for now, because my wetlands and coat, you know, colors, I was annoyed with these, but I understand.
Okay, I had a, any, any other questions for the board? Are you? Go ahead, Rick.
Finally, sorry.
Okay, I agree with Greg, I thought the estimate was low as well, and as I understand, Paul said it done well, there is, there is a bond.
Yes.
And the owner holds that bond. Who holds the law? I understand who's responsible for getting it done, but because of the completion there.
The town, the, the town is required to hold the bond or this. Or the, or the state.
Or the ball.
Yeah, it, it, it depends on, it depends on if the town can't hold it, if they don't have a process to hold it, it has to be held by.
Who's supposed to have the right estimate?
Yeah, it says, it says, that's within our ordinance.
The town state.
The town or the state.
I checked on that, we do have.
You do have the authority, okay, okay.
And this, this project has a twenty to thirty year life?
Right.
I'm looking at the efficiencies, I've been reading and writing, solar panel themselves, the light to electrical transfer is somewhere between nineteen and twenty-seven percent.
To be honest, I can't answer, I don't have the knowledge about the actual, more the, the civil and the site layout part of it, so if there was a specific.
This is why I asked, you know, I want to make sure I read it right.
Okay.
But here, I hear, what studies I've made sold it, it's somewhere less than thirty percent, so that dictates the number of the line. And you don't know, these particular panel, what, what efficiency they are, you don't know that?
Yeah, it would be in that literature if it was in there, if it's not, then it's something I'd have to look into.
Okay. And on top of that, the, the daylight factor. This is the efficiency of the panels, and you got the daylight factor, whether you're twelve hour light or sixteen hour light, maybe with that. I think somebody mentioned already, I want to make sure I understand, in, in the decommissioning, anything on the ground being removed, such as final tropical. Or stuff is being, if I read it right, it's being removed down the placental.
Yeah, I believe, I thought there was a depth of like eighteen inches or twenty-four inches.
So twenty-four inches or down, down to the great placental tilt, that's how I read it, that's why I'm asking, which is.
I mean, realistically, the, the screw anchors and the anchors that, that hold the panels down, those are all going to come up and out of the ground, there's no foundation. But yeah, the electricals typically eighteen to twenty-four inches.
That all, that all would be removed.
That all should be removed, absolutely.
Do any of these panels, the panels contain cadmium, lead, any hazardous materials?
Uh, that, I have to get back to you on that, I don't know.
Well, why ask, that's the concern I have, it's over the duration of twenty to thirty years, is there any, there any chance of leaching? Those kind of materials, if indeed they are in the panels, do they leach and where they go into the, do they contaminate the soil, do they contaminate the groundwater?
Uh, that's a good question, I would think if that was an issue, those panels probably wouldn't be used, is just my, just general opinion.
I guess I need to answer that question. Will you add that question to the expert?
Yep.
Because to me, that's a whole different area, indeed this contaminant, potential contaminants. We got a different concern about groundwater and soil, and neither one of them accounted for despite I can.
Yeah, have you run across that issue with any of the other projects that have come first?
They're brand new, we have no issues.
I know. I understand that, but you guys have, you guys had, you know, what, it was eight or so projects that have come through, I'm just curious if that's ever been an issue, ever been brought up? I'm, I'm just curious, because I, I wouldn't know, but.
I, I don't think that's come up, but I think this is only the second project that's come up since our ordinance was put in place.
Okay.
Prior to that, we didn't have a solid ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, but I'll get back to you on that, on that.
Yeah. What's my question, thank you.
Don't refer it to Rick's statement, that's, that's another thing I'd be concerned about if it's possible during the life of this project or. Your decommission, if this stuff can get into the ground, that changes the whole picture on a performance bond, I think. It would not be a easy, I don't think that'd be an easy remedy. We get, and I don't know exactly what to, either, but I know they're not, you can't put them in a landfill when you're done with it.
We need to get recycled again.
Yeah.
And, and I got to imagine with this many solar farms that you see going in, in the state of Maine, that. There was an issue that was present or thought of, to, to that extent, I would have thought that the DEP would be all of that. Because there's a ton of projects that, you know, all the projects go through their, their office and are looked at, so, but again, something to look at and get back to.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure, in here, is there a comment here?
Some of this kind of, but curious why the microphone.
Are you using the microphone that they have for the sound volume? Yeah, I think because when there's more than one on, they, they collapse, sometimes it's, you just have to remember to turn it on when you're talking. I'm sorry, they were just sitting when I wanted to make sure they were there.
Sleep back system back here, fan going back here, sort of runs out some of it, so. Eric the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, some of us don't need microphones.
Thank you.
Okay, hello. Yes, go ahead, Don, I think we'll get that. I go back to the view shed, I'm looking at that, because I see a lot of red. But yet, when I read the summary, it refers to it as minimal. And I'm kind of wondering how they decided that was minimal with all the red I see. And I don't know. Some of that is housing where you can see it, I know, I'm not sure the houses around the site, I wouldn't think. The surrounding trees, but probably protect them, but I have a member of the, I think it's real high ground. But I just wonder how they arrived at minimal this.
Yeah, Mike, is this on? Offbeat loud, my only thing I can think is that this project is surrounded by woods, oh, now, this project is surrounded by woods. And so when they need minimal, yeah, the, the future analysis goes up and I said, okay, who can see this point at whatever height was? And it's mapped out for, for contours, but now if you stick trees in there, no one can really see that, so maybe that's how they came to the decision of minimal.
Yeah, just, just one follow up, one of the other projects, one thing they did was they mapped it at, at ground level with bare earth, and then they mapped it at twenty-five feet in the air with bare earth. Basically, because we, the vegetated buffer zone, you can only prune down to twenty-five feet, which means that there's going to be twenty-five foot buffer around, around the property. So if you elevate the ground in the middle and say, who could act, that would tell us a little bit more of if there aren't trees in our way, who would actually be able to see that, right? So if it's on top of the hill and it's got trees all the way around it, nobody's going to see it, right? But if you do the bare earth rendering, everybody will see it because it's on top of the hill, so that just, both having those two different maps can be helpful. And you, and you don't necessarily need to do the different corners unless they're drastically different in height. If they are, then that's helpful, I appreciated that, but you can also do the elevated view of a twenty-five foot buffer zone of. You know, you basically draw that fence around it and say, well, what happens is who can actually see it with the vegetated buffer zone?
Yeah, because it's wooded around, they did that worst case scenario, it's with fair earth, right, there's, there's, there is no, yeah, there, so.
And don't get me wrong, I want to see that, that, that's good, but I would also add the one where, okay, here's where the vegetated buffer zone is. Because that, I think, provides more realistic expectation of who would actually be able to.
Because that I think provides more realistic expectation of who would actually be able to see it. Okay. I guess I would, uh, just kind of question that because anyone, anybody see it right with. Potential, you may not, you, you may not. It depends on where you are. You may see it from Mount Piscan, no matter how big your trees are, because they're so much higher up in elevation. But yes, if you're on top of a mountain, you're right. You, you put a vegetated buffer zone around it, nobody would see it. That was, you know, I think part of the, the planning board's thought when we asked for a vegetated buffer zone is that it wouldn't be viewable to everybody and that I think would be. Helpful in the representation. So we know who is going to see that. And, and if you are higher, you're going to see it. You know, because you'd be looking down on it. But if you're up high on the solar farm, nobody would see it. And that was. Really what the town was kind of, I think, aiming for was a less visible impact of the solar farm. So I think showing both of those examples is helpful. I did one more. One more. Go ahead. I, I just have one more quick one. I didn't see it anywhere, but I just want to double check following on Rick's comments. There aren't any batteries stored on site, right? This is not a battery based facility. Okay. I just wanted to double check. I didn't see it, but that's, I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I had, I had a question kind of following up a little bit with Greg's discussion. The, uh, the ventilation, this, this site is. Essentially fully vegetated. Uh, what is the approximate height of the trees currently? On this site? Are we talking, uh, mature forest or?
I mean, it's a mix, but most of it, I think, is mature trees.
Okay, fifty feet glass probably.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Now, gee.
Character of pine, but yeah.
Uh, the, yeah, I have no idea. A regular tree, yeah, okay. The, uh, the. Vegetated buffer that you're proposing to leave, I assume that is going to be the full height of the current. Uh, the current forest.
Now, yeah, so on the, on the map here, you can see. The green proposed three line around.
Right.
That would all stay as it is, everything.
Okay.
On that side. So it wouldn't be that.
You're, you're not going to take some of that down and replace it with something. Okay. And, uh, the, uh. The other question I had concerning the, uh, processing of the site itself, where you're going to have to be. Removing all the trees on, we'll, we'll look at six, six plus acres, I believe, more. Uh, the, uh, particularly with mature trees, I assume there's, uh, some fairly decent sized stumps. And what is the, the plan that if I was dealing with, uh, you know, the, the. The trees obviously be cut down, uh, the stump's going to be removed.
Yeah, the stumps will be removed in the upwind areas, in the wetland areas. Again, they will take that utility brush mower. And go in there and mow it down. So it's at grade level.
Okay, so, uh, in the wetland area, no, no soil disturbance.
Correct.
Uh, in the other areas, you said the plan is to remove the stumps, basically bulldozer?
Yeah, bulldozer excavator.
Right.
Yep.
You're not, not going to grind them. You're going to actually take them right out completely like.
I mean, I think, uh. The most efficient ways to take them out.
Yes.
Yep. Now typically the contractor would decide that when he gets there, is it more. Costly for him to stump grind or take it out? Uh, it's not really, I guess it's half a dozen or one of the other. Sometimes they use a stump grinding score. Uh, solar erosion control. So it's kind of, it depends on the contractor.
Well, yeah, I, I guess I would kind of question to add, but I'm trying to get a sense for how much disturbed soil we, uh. Were expecting. So it could be well, well, be a majority of the site is going to be disturbed soils.
Yes.
Which then will have to be revegetated.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Um. All right. I think that's all I have for the moment. I have another question. Yeah, go ahead.
Like rig, rig rope, rig point, no battery. I would assume if there's any modifications they want, it's being approved. Would be approved. Would have to come back to the board for those, those modifications, like if there's batteries. Or additional panels. That would all come back to us for approval. Oh, but any expansion, I believe.
Yeah, definitely.
Any expansion, yeah.
And modification, change of technology persons, that would all have to come back to us.
And I'm not clear on.
Oh, let's say the technology family change.
Yeah.
For the construction exam, or as Greg mentioned, batteries are added. Without all, what condition would bring it back to the board?
Well, if they. If they added more panels, that would definitely trigger it. Um, if they're changing technology. They should, but I'm not sure what will trigger. I'll have to think about that between now and the next meeting.
If they added the battery, they'd have to, because that's considered a.
Yeah, Mark, Mark clarified that.
Yeah.
Not like a, you know, a backup battery, electronics, but an actual battery storage. Our understanding is that would require additional DEP permits and it would have to come back to us for approval. That was our, that was Mark's clarification. Yeah, that was, you know, a year ago, but we had that discussion. If they added a battery system, they would have to come back. That's a separate entity. I don't know what the size limit would be for batteries.
I'll try to get some more clarity on it, but I, I mean, if Mark, that's what Mark was talking about.
Yeah, because I mean, it, it's, there was a, there was a, there was a push at the time with the cost of batteries, the cost of power. If the facility used batteries for storage, right, it could be more cost effective rather than sending it to the substation where the line loss and, and CMP and everything. Where if they kept it on site, they could just supply peak power and it would be more cost effective for the facility itself. To store the batter, store the power locally. And we said, wait a minute, that's enough. That's not covered in our ordinance. That's not covered anywhere. You know, large battery, we're talking, you know. Lots of lots of batteries. That, that's a whole nother environmental thing. We got to be mindful of. So that's why I wanted to make sure this facility doesn't have batteries stored. It's like what they generate during daylight goes out to CMP, goes through their transformer and goes out on the lines. You know, that's, that was, that was our understanding if they don't have a battery system. And I mean, it would have to be substantially, it would not be small if they want to store it. Just to add to that, um, the work that's gone into this, especially on the interconnection side, if you change anything right now. You might have to just extract a project, everything. It's, it's that big of a deal to go back through interconnection to add, you know, panels or other equipment. So. I don't anticipate any, any changes like that. Hey, any, uh.
If, if they, if it was questionable, if some, if someone came in with something and it was questionable as to whether it triggered the planning board review. I would be conservative and send it to the planning board, particularly with something like this. So just, I don't know if that.
Don't we can be.
Oh geez, I'm sorry. I was just, um, informing, um, that. If it was, if something came in, it was questionable as to whether or not it triggered, you know, for the planning board review. Uh, with something like this, I would be conservative and, and send it to the board.
Thank you.
We do allow.
Any, any further questions from the board? Okay. Uh, Eric, now, uh, I'll open the floor up to the public. Any questions, comments for the public?
I have two. One.
Excuse me, could you step up and identify yourself?
I have a very loud voice, so I don't speak. I'm Karen. I live in town. Um, two questions. One, you talked about environmental impact studies done on the wetlands. Has one been done on the park that is going to be plowed or taken down and all plowed out into nothing? Has an environmental study been done on that?
Yeah, the entire site has, has had a natural resource reviewed on, per, per DEP standards.
Okay. And was visibility thing, one time a year with that though? Because if it was done in, in the winter and fall and spring, when the park loses most of its fleet, is it going to be able to see all these? Wonderful panels?
So, uh, well, I mean. I'll answer that by saying that typically the, even natural resource review doesn't necessarily take into account. You, um, it's more looking at the resources, the wetlands, the streams, flora, fauna. And that sort of things, what impacts the project would have on that. And that was done, um, there was actually a foresight visits done. And DEP requires, especially for burnout pool and burnout pool, uh. Review two times, one in like, depending on where you are in the state, but I think down here is in early May. And then a second follow up on a few weeks later. And so, uh, yeah, they made several, um, site visits and looked at the property. We think that was the entire project area.
Uh, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, Bill, I've got some watershed district. I have a couple of questions for Shane. I mean, I hear, I was hearing, first of all, I'm gonna start. This is going to be the permit pool. This particular project does require a termify rule for stormwater. In, in the applicant, well, the application that I received and copied, it said that it has been reviewed and accepted. It's accepted, we approve?
No.
Okay. Okay, so it hasn't been approved yet. But, um, one of the things I, um, I spoke with someone at DEP, I'm getting quickly to report something that says accepted and approved. So.
Yeah.
Leave every point to talk to. Well, when, when I sent the permit in, uh, the DEP will actually send me a letter that says, hey, we've accepted it for review. And the box, that basically is their start clock, like their ready period.
You know, that, that would I. Yep.
Yeah, look, you know, let me clarify that with my twenty years experience with DEP. When, when a license application comes in, it have a certain period of time to accept it as complete or. Request additional information, whatever. And, um, my sense was, when he said it was accepted, it was, the application was accepted. That, that essentially has completed and is under review.
Reason I ask also, because there's another similar project coming up next. And that particular project said that the application that it was submitted to DEP was under review. So that one has apparently not been accepted.
Correct.
Oh, that's cleared up, but because I just wanted to know if everything in this plan has been approved. I heard something about stump grinding and preparation of soil, and a little bit about some of the panels traversed at wetland areas. Um, my understanding is, uh, DEP considers panels, solar panels, to not be impermed.
Correct.
If they are established in. Positions over what are deep metal soil. That. And I, I would imagine meadow means you're taking a stump side. Because the meadow is essentially a buffer to receive the runoff of the panels, the filtration. So I was wondering if there's any kind of specific or special, um, preparation of the soil, wooded, mature wooded situation. To make it a, what was essentially a metal buffer. Uh, uh, so I don't necessarily agree with the DEP's determination on this. Uh, I look at like. Five acres of six, ten, thirty acres of pamper. And they say it's not imperfect, so it's not a government, they should say. I think it's political, it's, okay, that's fine. It's neither here nor there. But it has to be over what is being metal conditioned, which cannot be mowed more than twice per year.
Right.
And so I don't think it's simply, it's, it's simple as putting two inches of topsoil, like picking all stumps. Over native soil, putting two inches of topsoil, putting in like contractor, then grass, you call it that metal. I'm not sure.
Yeah, in my opinion, it actually is that simple. I mean, two inches of little light on topsoil, I think you'd have a little bit of. Yeah, I mean, really, they just want a grass cover that isn't mowed twice a year. That's good. It's, it's that simple of a standard.
Okay, but as far as you mentioned that there are some channels that are going through wetlands. Now, those obviously are not going to be going over metal conditions. So there were, therefore I would probably, if I was DEP, I've been, where does stormwater demonstrate for DEP? We have it for like twenty years for all links from the cops to watershed. I have to be one of the thirty one years. I would not, I would say that the exemption or the termination that, that is not impervious because. Metal. Soil would not apply if it's going over water, the wetland. You remove that determination of not being imperfect. And I'm just wondering, like, that's what I'm asking, has DEP approved this? Because they're, they are reviewing this. So they, and, and I tried to stay in touch with them on, on, on this thing. So. Uh, I guess I, I guess, Shane, I'm just saying, um, you know, I learned fossils numbers on this and everything looks like it's going to be really good and everything, but we're also concerned about motion control and everything about the site and everything. The watershed, and that's so late, which is an impaired water body. And I just want to make sure that, um, um, that, that county watershed, if, if we are. Reviewing it with the full knowledge that DEP are. Saying, I, I don't want to be saying that this is good by us and then the DEP turns around and say, problem.
Yeah, but, and honestly, from an engineering standpoint, it's always been, all right, who's, who's got, who's in the control here, the, the year of the town and the planning board? So it's always been kind of like, you know, who from who and what permits do we put in first and second and. Yeah.
The town, the town controls, but.
So.
Local, local control.
Yeah, but everybody looks to the DEP.
And the county watershed, we have differed with DEP past.
Yep.
We try not to, and I have it for a year. And so I try to stay consistent with them in, in parallel with them. And, uh, uh. So.
My only statement to that, Bill, uh, I think you bring up some good points. Uh, the only thing I would say that is. DEP currently, and either does the town, have rules about, at least to my knowledge, about what you're talking about, having panels over a wetland. And if it's, you know, it, it's impacts, if they did, if either one of those did, we wouldn't be putting panels in those areas.
No, but I guess I would consider it the same as putting a rooftop over a big tree. Is that the runoff would be unbuffered and untreated. Whereas if it's over a metal, which is. Right. And so let you know, folks, in stormwater treatment, there's two different kinds of buffers. There's a wooden buffer, has a certain treatment factor, and there are metal buffers. And they are determining these, that these metal buffers, as long as you take out the woods and you put in metal. Nothing's changed. They're both good. But if it was a lawn. Lawns are actually phosphorus generators. They create jet phosphorus in my mouth because they're not, they don't have the infiltration of, 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 like a metal. He saw it. I still have this thing, I'm, I'm just anxious to see what DEP comes up with. But, uh, you know, that doesn't change my phosphorus, uh, calculation, stormwater runoff calculations that I spoke with you about briefly. I mean, those are good. This is planned on. But it's the erosion of the soils and everything else I'm a little bit concerned about here, in particular, the next project as well.
Eddie, the only other thing I'll add to that is, uh, I was involved with a project in Holden that had, um, almost two and a half acres of wetland. Pre-claring and the DEP had issued a permit for that. Now, they had questions about it and I think, I'll, I'll be honest, that, that, uh. That project actually probably piqued some interest in the DEP to say, hey, what are we doing here? They, they have not come up with any. Really got, the only guidelines they've come up with is if you are, um, in wetlands and over a certain amount, you are now, uh, into the, uh, in the FEI program. And so there's a limit there and what they said, okay, if it's not, it's not a structural or a filling back and filling backs have. X amount of dollars per square foot. And the vegetation clearing is half that. So that's really what they, I think that's how they, um, are trying to deter. Both from too many, too much wetland backs. And we really did, uh, you'll see on both, um, sites. Both amount of fair amount of wetlands. We really tried to stay out of those wetlands as best we could, given the, the constraints. Um, because we started looking at this at a, at a five acre lot system, which is about twenty acres and. I sort of rolled that down to about an acre, just to be that kind of conscious of it. So. I just sort of rolled that down to about an acre, just to be that kind of conscious of it, so.
Well, I think I think, no, because I'm looking at that, just exactly. That's who's gonna make a comment?
Yeah.
Oh, I might find out who's in your mouth, you guys just come up here.
We got one more back there.
Yeah, microphone, microphone.
Yeah.
I would carry, this is our property.
Yeah.
Great to show the world, I'm the president in town here, thanks for opening this up for comments, um. With this being the first and then second solar project that I think fully came in under three ordinance, I just wanna take a few minutes to talk about weapon impacts. For the board's consideration, so that there's kind of an consistent review of these going forward. Um, at the state level, when a project is gonna impact wetlands, it's gonna trigger the state agency review with the E P, they're gonna first be required to avoid any weapon impacts. Impacts that cannot be avoided are gonna be required to be minimized to the greatest extent possible, and then you get to the impacts that are gonna, can't be avoided. Can't be minimized, then you have to pay uh the interview program for those impacts, so. Not taking on this project, but just to leave this as a pressing point, um. What that can end up looking like is it is projects will get a little funky because they're actually truly avoiding at that first step. And I could talk about the benefits of wetlands and burnout pool sunlight, but I don't want, um. So it might not seem like a lot of project by project, but I I had some numbers that I looked at my phone, I think for this project, it winds up being. About an acre and a half of weapon impact, and for the second project, just over another acre. So I would just, I think, uh, I'm curious, I feel like you've been friends with experts on this, but although the state is gonna be doing that review. I'm curious if the, I think it's within the board's purview to also consider those steps of avoidance, minimization, and then mitigation. Um, so that every project is is truly minimizing those impacts, and as more of these get built in town, that we're not having large cumulative impacts. Um, that's regular weapons, if you will, if I could have one more minute of your time to talk a little bit about significant burnout pools, um, so those are. Weapons that have especially um diverse, a multitude of species that are breeding in them, or numbers of species. Um, in addition to the regular weapon benefits of being a nursery for fish, being filtered in our waters, pouring extra water for rain events. Um, so if something has that certain combination of species. And at the significant burnout pool, it's regulated at a little bit higher level. And twenty-five percent of the canopy of the buffer around a significant burnout pool is the max that's allowed to be impacted by a project. So again, that kind of just um comes back to thinking through that avoidance as the first step, where this. Project is exactly biting into that twenty-five percent, um. There may be. Power within the rules of reviewing the permits to require that applicants minimize those, minimize or avoid those impacts on our cumulative significant burnout pool resources. Those are my same comments for the next part of this talk.
We have to sign up, she don't do.
Uh, there is, there was, but I didn't.
Great, we gotta sign up. That's awesome. Um, okay, any further questions? Yes.
Um. Yeah, if you don't. Um, hi, uh, whoa, uh, my name is Fizzy Vernon, and my partner, Miles Forman, we live at one ninety-two Turkey Lane, and if you have. Any access to tax, or or something similar, uh, the plot that the K G Energy now owns is thirty-seven, and we are thirty-seven A. Which is entirely encompassed by thirty-seven, so we would be the most affected by this project than I would argue the other residents of Turkey Lane. Um, but I just wanted to say that we're we're new to the town, we just moved here in April, I'm really excited to be in a smaller area, we live in Las Vegas, so. You know, we've we've loved it here so far, with our paths, everything that we need, and um we actually. Really, really love the residential small street that we live on, and we love the nature around us, we have kind of that land trust right beyond this plot. And uh, having been to Mount Pisca, I would agree with some of you guys that it would be visible, because we've been and tried to spot our house from there, Turkey Lane and so on. So I do think it would be a visibility issue as well. Um, I'm a little worried about construction vehicles going up and down Turkey Lane, going right next to our house, right past us. It's gonna kind of disrupt the lane, quiet, you know, view that we have of the neighborhood here, and. So I just kind of wanted to say that, coming from the perspective of someone living there, that uh we'd be a little disappointed, I think, if uh this project was to move forward. Uh, furthermore, that uh. The proposed area that we're going to be built is kind of up the hill from us, and we already have issues with our basement flooding, like every time it rains, and so we uh. Are worried about the soil erosion and so on, and what the result from it. So, yeah, I just meant to kind of say, out of the people that are living right there, I think myself and my neighbors included, really love the forest there, really love. Um, the fact that it's very quiet, and we, you know, we are close to them as well, and. Um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of put my voice out there and let that be heard, should this move forward anywhere, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, for the project, it is, we live where it says, do you care, uh, share Karen live, that is.
Yes, that I just thought that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one more, do one. All right. No, I was, um.
Oh, okay.
I guess I'm asking the board, are, is there still going to be a discussion of things such as the setup of motion controls that are on, on my, playing C two, sheet C two? And uh, proposed for this, or is that?
Um, actually, I did have a few questions, comments on that, as we get into that, but. Uh, did you have a specific comment on that, Bill?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I looked at the plan, I just, I stared over it quickly, because essentially, I mean, they're, they're identical for both sites, and I'm sorry to say that. There's reference to things that aren't even part of the project, all of the things that have that aren't there. And uh, so if you have, like, find your way through the weeds, with, you know, what are the things that drive this particular project? And uh, and 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 how uh appropriate are they, um, and and I think for the most part, I think the uh things that are listed in here. Um, are 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 pretty good, I think what are, what's really important, I didn't want to highlight a couple of things, for the board to be aware of, that I think. Is under the general construction details number four, about the uh inspection actually by the contractor, et cetera, on a weekly basis, so. Uh, I I just, uh, I just feel like, um, we've been getting, they're getting hit with a lot of heavy rain events. Frequently, especially this year, and we're a weather circus station, County Watershed, we brush, we screen, see the, even free things, and they're yelling, having a growth of of events. And uh, a lot of times, there's, there are no inspections, and and people are are just, um, they're very upset, their contractors aren't. Watching the inspection, so I I think things like the inspection is really important, also under the monitoring program, which is the last part of the, of the. Sheen C two, about the inspection week, on a weekly basis, following raining events, et cetera. I do understand that under section or chapter five for the stormwater, uh, for permify rule, they'll also have to maintain a log inspection log of your voting controls, that's not listed here. When I spoke to D E P, they say that actually the permify, the permify rule to D E P will also be recommending or uh uh requiring even additional uh uh controls there. But when I spoke to a individual at D E P, um, who actually had prepared a PowerPoint presentation, he reviewed a lot of solar, uh, arms throughout the state. It's like a thirty-some slide of solar, uh, uh, PowerPoint presentation on some of the things that just go wrong on sites that are large expanses of the area that are being. Uh, uh, cleared and prepared, and all of a sudden they're vulnerable to a heavy rain event, that their, their gardens are down. Um, he suggested that some of the things that, um, that we, that that the board here would, et cetera, this would apply to this and as well as the other. Project over uh on the other side of two oh two, is that uh, that there, that the town has uh, uh, a clear contact information for the. The individual who's gonna be responsible for any emergency response to uh an event on site. Uh, when they gather problems, because I I've seen, I've seen a midget blow up, but it's not the new bicycle anymore, when you evolve, like that move up. Came down a rambler road, went under railroad tracks, but then the ambescop lake, it was still for half a lake, I seen that now. And so you you gotta know, who can you contact, and immediately jump into action, not have you go through the long call. So that's something that I think the town, the C E O and someone should have. Uh, another one is that they recommend that all erosion control, you know, anything related to the work of this whole, be on the site. Before any work is done on the site. So that they're not started or gonna have to go and get the B M P, whether it's not available in this, I hope it's still that, or whatever, everything has to be, should be on the site. When they start the work. And that's the, the third one, uh, this this came from D E P today, because D E P does not have the authority to actually. Incredible, uh, they don't have stop work order authority, and I I do know that the town does have stop work order authority. We do talk with the Washington, we go to the town, and I had instances where they have a stop work order. But I think that, uh, we've just got to make it clear that, uh, in the event that there is a, uh, a. Fire metal disaster, uh, due to anything like our main first storm this year, got five inches in twenty-four hours, something like that, is that all work stops. If there's not, like, the D E P is the third example, there's fifty guys on site, forty-nine don't keep working while one person is doing the B M P, making sure the erosion. Are in place, and that, it's a difference there, stop work order, and those are the only three, I mean, there are things in County Watershed, I know there's these plus. But uh solar plants are, um, are, they're new, um, large scale, um, landy service type project. And uh, that comes under planning board review, the only thing of this magnitude or uh size. That I think that really can cause a water quality issue would be agricultural type of practices, which really are exempt from your, from your review and regular authority to control. So it's just, uh, uh, I I just didn't do this enough, I've I've done a lot of third-party monitor, monitoring of prison jobs, and I get to the eighties, and I. I've seen erosion problems that are horrendous, and and uh, I'm I'm not concerned about the long-term impact of this project, as I mentioned, uh. The boss, once this thing is all pumped up, probably pre-developed, stable. Everything should be good, but it is during the development stage, but I think it really would, it was really the most important part. This far, uh, I've expanded my knowledge, environmental. Not a long-term impact, it's short-term construction phase.
Hey, Bill. Uh, yeah, good question there.
Yeah. Name is Joe Verlomen. Three forty, grass forty-one. Anyway. EPA. Down our homes, all down the belt, and what you have. Spoken off to me about the G P A. I'm a manipulator. I was a developer, I know how it's done. Right, it all comes out of the one, that's all. Listening to all types of environmental stuff, I went through all types of desert fortus impact studies. Wetland impact studies. Desert growth, hundred-year flood plains, you name it, I feed it. And I fill it. So. Proud of it, maybe. Bottom line is, comes out of money. We've got three different LLCs on our organization, chug, chug there. Who's the main corporation? Where, where's the company?
So, uh, the one LLC is my company, which is just the engineering firm that's doing the permitting.
Right.
Uh, the other two LLCs, each one of these projects. K G Energy, with the main LLC, opens up different LLCs for each project they do, and that's pretty common.
Definitely, I understand, but they all open up LLCs, yeah, because I had dozens of LLCs. I have them. Um, I go right down to the state building, hundred eighty dollars, two hours later, I have another state. And um, that's also tons of form of manipulation. Uh, you were talking about money and bonds and everything else. Best way to make money, come, go, bonds disappear, I'm broke. Two hours later, I have another LLC. It's all reorganized. Bottom line is, follow the money. I see these things going up all over the place. You guys are all talking about environmental impact. Yes, I see environmental impact. I saw many acres of trees between Route forty-one and Lake, disappear behind Becker's house. No. And uh, they went away. They'll never come back. Maybe fifty years from now, like, president. You brought up forty-five, we're looking at long term. Twenty-five, twenty-seven years, that's nothing. That's a short period. My next question, the real question is, first off, I haven't heard you answer. Probably about seventy-five percent of questions I've just called rose. Um, very few of them, or it's in the study, or it's this, or that, which puts the burden of research on this board. And it shouldn't be, should be crystal clear, should be transparent. So. What it comes down to is all of these solar panels, all of these solar farms, and I see all of them. Um, which is why we moved them here, because we didn't want to see them, and we know that they impact. And you know it, you know, of anybody else in here, this year. But. Who's benefiting from it? You know, well, nineteen percent of it is gonna be sold back to the utility company, uh, we, you know, we patch in, and that, that, that's great. Is anybody, there, does anyone, they're raised on there? Anyone makes a challenge? So we, I I, so my question is.
We haven't used the mic, uh, it's really hard for people at home here, and for the, because it's being recorded, if you could use the.
If you, uh, wish, continue speaking, please use the microphone.
Okay, I'm down to thirty seconds.
Okay.
Bottom line is.
Finish up with the microphone, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. So the bottom line is, there's all types of impact studies, environmental studies. Water study, border study, studies, everything, you're probably the most on cue as to what's actually gonna happen. With this parcel of work in the next few years. Everything else is conjecture. The bottom line here is, forget about the impact studies, look at the project, I want to know how Winthrop. Is going to benefit from this project, I want to know how I'm going to benefit from this project. They are not going to benefit from this project. So that's my question. I don't know if it's board question, I don't know if it's you question. All I know is that I see him in the last few years. Me personally, I haven't benefited a one bit, all I see is my roots get chopped down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any further comments from the general public? Seeing none, uh, I'll close the comment period. Any further comments from the board?
Yeah, I missed one. So I I missed one of my questions, it was hidden in my notes, so our requirement on uh S four, uh, section eleven. It says, a copy of the ad-built plan to the solar generating ordinance shall be provided and approved by the local fire department official, have you done that? And is that letter, I don't remember seeing that in, in the package anywhere.
Did you say as built?
It, well, it says, shall be provided and approved by the local fire, uh, a copy of the ad-built site plan for the solar. It, well, it says shall be provided and approved by the local fire. A copy of the as-built site plan for the solar. I guess as as as-built is probably out, but I mean, part of that is. The fire department needs to approve it, and that should be part of the package. And the app applicant shall provide any site specific fire management training for the site. All means of shutting down the solar generating system shall be clearly marked. So that's, that was something that our fire department required was making sure that they knew how to shut the system down. And if, really, I think we put in the the part about fire management training, just in case there was a battery system. Because you can't use standard water with a battery system. So that was why we wanted to make sure to add that, is if there was specialized training or equipment they needed, they could require the applicant to provide that. So it probably shouldn't say as-built, it should say as apply, as 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 uh, um, as the application said, or or as the. You know, but they need to get a copy of that, and that would be one of the provisions. Um, if we make a motion, and and that would be one of the provisions, is to make sure to have that copy. To say that, okay, they understand here's where your signage is gonna be, here's where the shutdown is, and here's who the contact is. That's really, somebody mentioned emergency contact, and I was like, wait a minute, that's in the ordinance. So I found my note, and I said, yeah, that is in the ordinance, and that's really for the fire department to be able to go to the site, know who to call. And and also know how to shut the system down if there's something wrong. We get that question all the time, and we, in all our projects, we incorporated an OX box, and we always uh. Stay in there that that is gonna be handoff, and usually we have that um, that review done. I didn't notice that here, maybe just because of that Asso term, uh, because when I think Asso, I think that's after construction and. Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, I think that that's probably a little confusing, but I think that would be nice for the application, is to make sure to have that. Just so that you say exactly what you did in some formal letter, and that's, and the fire department signs off and says, yep, that's what we want. We want an OX box of this location with this information in it. That's, you know, whatever their requirements are, just to make sure that their requirements are met, and they know how to shut the thing down if they need to. So just so I understand, were those the, those departments a requirement for the review of the application? It's, it's in the ordinance as 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 it's needed for the application. But it does say as-built, you're right, so that could be a little.
Oh, I just want to make sure I didn't miss a step, that's all.
No, it just, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree, that's a little confusing to require that upfront, say as-built.
Right.
As designed.
As designed to be.
But yeah, it may be rewarding. But the, for the ordinance on that, uh. Certainly, uh, at a minimum, if we were to approve this, that would be a condition that that must be provided. Uh, and that that approval must be received. Same as. Uh, you know, any outstanding D E P permits, obviously, nothing goes until everything is is approved anyway. I uh, I did have. A couple more questions, comments, I guess. The uh. Related to the erosion control and uh, there's the. There's the uh. C two, uh, which does show erosion control basically around the entire perimeter of. The. The project. I think, and and I'm not sure what's. D E P's requirements are. Uh, in the event that you get the approval to. Cross over the wetland. Uh, I'm not sure what additional they would apply, what what I would see as appropriate is. In addition to. Erosion control barriers around the entire perimeter, assuming. Um, a, a good portion of. Of the project is going to be disturbed soil, that I would. I would suggest it might be appropriate to put. Uh, erosion control between. Any wetland areas and the disturbed soil. To minimize the impact. Of additional sediment to the wetland areas. Uh. And and that might be something D E P might require, if they give you permit to. Uh, to uh, put panels across that well, and then they require erosion control around the perimeter that. If they don't, I would. Um, and then there's the uh, follow wetlands to the uh, south. Uh, which again, there I would, I would suggest erosion control. Uh, at the border of that wetland. Uh, to uh, keep any disturbed soil out of that to the extent possible. So certainly, uh, I think additional erosion control there. Uh. And I'm, I'm not totally familiar with the erosion control standards, but. Uh, if you've got. Let's say. Four or five hundred feet of. Of a slope of disturbed soil, maybe some interim control is gonna be necessary, so you don't get. Uh, in the case of the heavy rainfall, or you don't get a cloud going all the way. All the way down four, five hundred feet before, is there anything to begin to slow it down? Uh, and and it it seems like a lot of these things are. Sort of at comparative discretion to see what's going to work. But I think some of those things, particularly the erosion control. Uh, you know, we might want to assume the worst case as far as soil disturbance and be. Very conservative with the erosion control, particularly protective of the uh, the wetland areas. So that's an area where I certainly would like to see some improvement in the plan. Uh, on that, and um, also the uh, uh, good point made about the uh. Emergency contact individual, I noticed you were taking notes on on most of these things, so. Uh, I think that's something we might expect to see. Uh, any further comments, other board?
Yeah, uh, looking at that drainage, uh, just. Just a clarification, I'll look at the drainage map you just brought up. And.
This C two?
This area, C two, yeah.
Yeah.
This area down here, this hash, I assume that's wetland, right?
Correct.
Are you, are you aware of that wetland?
Lives on our property.
So. How do you intend to control? I mean. You brought up the point about five inch rainstorm. It look, looking to controls, looking at the. The way the arrows point, and I assume that's the way the flow is. Uh, it it puts significant down around that perimeter, also into that wetland. Um, how are you gonna control? Totally implying impairing their property with all the.
So that's what the self fence is for.
Will the show fence is permanent?
No, the self fence is temporary, they.
I'm talking about long term, after you pull show fence out.
So. The way the D E P looks at that, which is the way. That's the way we look at design, they say that if I go from a forested place to a metal place that. That if if, well, let me put it this way. If there was an issue, I guess, with stormwater runoff, like quantity. Uh, they'd be, we'd have to permit a, actually a stormwater permit, not a permit by rule, and they'd be making us put in controls. Um, you know, such as uh, drain soil filters, or wet ponds, or something like that. And usually what kicks that is impervious area. And because these solar farms don't have the impervious area. Uh, that's not required, so they're not. From their perspective, they're not saying that there's gonna be a significant of increase to affect abiding neighbors. Wow, yeah. Except you're cutting down for the forest. Be wild. That is.
That's your answer for those folks having excess water down on their property.
You know, D E P does not be declared or considered solar panel impervious, uh, for solar farm. But uh, trust me, if you were to put solar panels, lived on the shore front of the lake. You wanted to put a dozen solar panels within a hundred feet of the shore. They would consider it a structure, and they would consider it impervious. In a solar farm, that's why they have the meadow conditions, mowing only twice per year. They are, they could say they are built properly, like I say, meadow, there are metal buffers, and once I go like a soil group. Better phosphorus treatments on the soil, just like there are forested buffers. But you take away that metal condition underneath those solar panels. And I think you also take away the exemption of them being considered not impervious. They are no different to me than a dog shed, garage roof, or anything else. Brings us not flow through the solar panels. They they run dogs with it.
Yeah, the only thing I can say is, uh, these are the rules that. These are the rules that the town has set. And we design the project per those rules.
Right.
So if there's, you know, new rules or whatever that come out. That we need to abide by, then we would abide by those, but you know, frankly, that, that's with any project, if you had a a Walmart come in. The the, just for instance, the the extra uh, silks that you're asking for, which I don't think is. That's not a big deal, I don't see why we can't do that, but that's not anything that a Walmart would have to do. So, again, it's, we're, there are the rules that we're abiding in, that I I I think we're just trying to play by the rules, we're not going. Beyond that, we're not going below that, those are, those are rules.
The one thing that I did learn from D E P today. Shane may be aware of this, but it's. Like something that's gonna be required, required term by rule is. Don't intend that they clear the site for six acres. That they're gonna be six acres open, I understand you can work one acre at a time. And you have to then temporarily stabilize, if you clear six acres. You have to temporarily stabilize with vault or whatever, the other five acres. And you can work one acre at a time.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that, uh, I know the project I did, uh, maybe it's a year ago, they, it was a twenty acre parcel. And we were allowed to open five acres at a time, and they actually required us to have a three P I inspector onsite. To ensure that erosion controls and all that was in working good, and they they require that. Uh, depending on their review as well, so. Um, there are those added controls.
I have a question.
Uh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just. Educated myself a little bit, and I just had a question, so for the significant, uh, the twenty five percent. Significant fertile pole area that's gonna be impacted, right? So it says that you have to minimize forest, forest floor disturbance and maintain native understory vegetation and down woody debris. So is something different happening in here? And to permit it?
Were you looking at that? Sorry.
It's part of the, what standards you have to meet to get a permit by rule. That, I looked it up. Yeah. For fertile pole. Significant wildlife habitat. So I see you did within the twenty five percent, that's correct. But then how do you, how is that gonna happen if you guys are basically going to have to like remove stumps and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we won't be removing stumps, we're just gonna be mowing it basically, that's how that's gonna work.
But to install the panels. What do you have to do?
No. No, you just need to, you just need to clear it down to grade.
Okay.
Um, I I think there's almost misunderstanding on this. Uh. The. Clearing the grade was over at the. Small wetland to the north.
Yeah, but the.
You're talking about the uh.
This green shaded area.
Green shaded area. On the west.
Right.
This area here.
Yes.
All of natural resource impacts, yeah. They'll just be mowed.
So there's no.
Graves in there, I think you're gonna pick that?
Yep, yeah, there are. The whole, the whole, the whole site is forested.
So how do you minimize the forest floor disturbance?
It's by not, uh, by not growing your grade.
Okay, so it's just taking it down to the level, and you work within where the tree stumps are, and we don't move them?
You don't, yeah, we're not gonna move any tree stumps, we're just gonna uh, mow down to grade level, yep. You ever seen like on the uh, the side of the highway? They're doing, they do mowing activities where they've actually got that uh. Now they call them rhinoceros beds or whatever, and that take trees down.
Yeah.
Seen that? Yeah, same thing.
Okay. But that's something that you have to get a permit for, is for this green shaded area. Okay.
Yep.
So D E P does look at that.
Yes.
If I may ask a question?
Yes.
So my understanding that your project, it has been analysis of the pre and post grade of flow, I'm just thinking about the neighbors here. How that might change during the big storm?
No, there hasn't. Now, I saw, it's not a requirement for the D E P firming. And it wasn't very required in here, you got the bow level, so. Yeah, so I probably should jump in, I'm being an expert hydrologist to understand runoff and coefficients. Um, one of the reasons is because when you're meadow, your runoff coefficient is actually a lot lower than it is in forest. And it's much, much lower than it would be for impervious cover, so you think about rain as it falls. Right? The rain's gonna fall, some of the rain is going to run off on the surface. Some of it's gonna go into the ground in what's called interflow, which is gonna run between the wetted, the groundwater table and the wa- and the surface. And that's gonna run into the streams, but through the ground, and then you have the groundwater table. And some of that rain is going to evaporate, transpire off, but a lot of that is the interflow during the summer. So runoff coefficient is what goes directly off the surface, it never enters the ground. So that's what that number is. And it's a number always less than one, right? One would be like all the rain went on the ground, so if you paved it, a lot of times they use runoff coefficients of one or point nine eight or point nine five, things like that. So as you start to move down change, forested, because the rain makes it to the floor, and there isn't that. Meadow, let's say meadow grass, the runoff coefficient itself is actually slightly higher than it is for meadow. That's one of the reasons they require specifically, the state requires meadow type conditions, is because your runoff coefficient is going to be the lowest. It is the lowest runoff co- coefficient, so that means that it should actually decrease the amount of water. Let's arguably say decrease the amount of water, you get five inches of rain in a couple hours, that's well beyond a hundred year rainstorm, just so you know. Right? Maybe the twenty four hour rainstorm is seven point five inches of rain. So five inches of rain in two hours, that could exceed the hundred year rainstorm, that'll generate streams and ponds and lakes everywhere. That's a lot of water all at once, so we can't design, the state doesn't require any designs for those kind of extreme cases. So usually they're two out, two year twenty four hour storms is usually what they see for stormwater runoff. Things like that, depending on what town, what state you're in, things like that. So just so you kind of understand what we're talking about, is it shouldn't necessarily change the runoff. Now, that's the assumption that this is all meadow. And as Bill brought up, the state has mandated that these cannot be classified as impervious surface. We know the rain's not falling through the panel, right? The rain hitting the panel and running off. So that requires that, that meadow condition to be able to break that fall where the edges, so it doesn't dig a trench. Start eroding dirt and start making that dirt transport, that's the whole idea behind it. I'm not saying I agree with the state, I'm just saying that's what the state has said. So the state has said that that's not, that is, that that is, cannot be. So the state has said that that's not, that is, that, that is, cannot be considered impervious surface. So when we talk about runoff coefficients, just realize the meadow condition is ideal for the runoff. So Bill brought up an interesting point, you know, wetland is not ideal. Wetland has a lot of silt and a lot of clay. Those actually have very high runoff coefficients. Very little goes in. Even though it's a slow gradient, it's a high runoff coefficient because water doesn't go through clay well. As we all know, when we play, right? You play in the puddles, where do they sit on the clay layers? So just a little bit of hydrology one-on-one for you, just so you kind of feel like, you know, we do try to take these things into account. But the state's rules, some of them make sense that you're, by transforming them to meadow condition, it shouldn't really substantially change your runoff. And your drainage area, the area that where a drop's going to fall, it runs onto that property, that's not changing. They're not changing the general slope. So they're not redirecting all of this and pointing it all into a stream or channel that goes towards your house. So that shouldn't change your overall runoff. Your surface coming from the rain will not, should not theoretically change from what it is now. So the runoff you see won't change theoretically. Again, classifying panels as non-impervious cover and meadow conditions underneath. So I'm not going to get into the math or anything like that, but I'm just saying that's the way it really works.
But when it does have to be meadow, is there's a different curve number for lawn?
There's a very different number for lawn, there's a very different number for wetland. So there's a very different number for clay. There's different, I mean, I, I, I've got the book. I've actually written the manual. So I know what they are. Um, so I, I, you know, they are, they are out there. Those, that information is out there. But I think that's the reason that they classify. They wanted to classify underneath solar panels to be meadow conditions, not lawn.
But well, once, once we disturb this area by pulling up stumps and all that, how long does it take to them, till that plan becomes meadow condition?
I, I mean, usually it's going to be six to twelve, six to twelve months. Yeah, usually it's. And, and, and Mark said, you know, that's his job is to go out, inspect those and say, okay, now you can pull the silt fences. And, and it says it in the plan. It says it in our ordinance. It says it in state guidelines until the ground is stabilized. So assuming you have vegetation off, that's something that, then, that, that's really Mark's job is to make sure that that, those, those, those measures to protect sediment from running off are only removed once the ground is stabilized and everything's all back to that restored stable condition.
Yeah, and that's typically, you know, the certainty of a year or two before those are removed. Any further comments from the board? Or any thoughts how we should proceed with this?
Well, I think I got everything written down. If you want me to try to make a motion.
Well, um, I I guess I'm going with the idea of do we try to capture this all in a motion or do we maybe want to, uh, table this one pending of some additional information?
Let's, I was going to recommend that with the following new information.
Oh, okay.
I got, I think I can.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. I have, when, when you said a motion, I didn't. My motion was the table.
I'll, I'll.
Regarding the. That was kind of my thoughts. I mean.
Yeah.
We've sort of been agreed.
I only wrote down six, so I missed something you had.
I don't. Um, and you can add if I missed.
I, I will pass you to.
Okay, I will, I will give this a try. I got it by guns. Hopefully the, the thing recognized me. I'm not going to read the, the actual case number is twenty-three oh seven and that's all you can get.
Uh, hold on a second.
Yeah.
If we could just table it to a, a specific date and time, so the November eighth is the next meeting? So if you table it to that meeting specific, it'll be helpful.
Well, it'll sort of be up to the applicant whether they're able to provide the, uh, info.
Yeah, we did table it. We're just going to say table it until they're, they, they can meet our requirements and then come back. So if it's the next meeting, that's fine, then.
Okay.
How do we know when the D E P is going to?
That's.
That would probably determine when we.
That's one of my requirements as well.
So like I said, I might change these a little bit from when we actually discussed it. But number one, I have on my list, uh, sorry, I'm making a motion that I'm going to table case twenty-three oh seven. Not going to read the full case, uh, the solar array on Turkey Lane with the following conditions. Um, that our application receives the following information. Number one, the access road is, uh, just an access road and the turnaround is removed to be a full fifty foot vegetated buffer with just the access road in and out. Uh, number two, uh, and, 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 and an executive summary of the environmental evaluation, the company that did it with a statement saying they identified the burnable pools, um, et cetera. Who did it? What was the results, et cetera? Number three, uh, updated the decommissioning X estimates, so the cost of decommissioning. Number four, for the view sheet analysis, that's section S four, part four. And it does say in our analysis that you do it at ground level and at twenty-five feet. So follow the guidance that's in the ordinance, um, please. And, and make sure to include and label Mount Fisca to help us orient ourselves, please. Uh, number five is update the map keys to make sure if that element is not used on the map, it's not included in the key and make sure that everything that is on the map is included in the key to help us make sure we understand what it is we're seeing. Number six, um, we would like to table this until the D E P permits are approved, not as accepted, but actually approved, um, because then we have the ability to know whether those have been done or completed. We've had a lot of discussions about wetlands, soils, meadow. Um, it would be great in that permit if we get an explanation of, um, a clarification from D E P about meadow conditions and what happens if it's not in meadow conditions. As Bill suggested, you know, we want to understand, can we put panels over a wetland condition? Those are not wet meadows. The runoff coefficient will be different. So again, we'd like to see D E P's approved permit before we would move forward on, on an application. Uh, number seven is, um, your verification, as Rick mentioned, your concerns about panel breakdown, leakage of, of any type of potential contaminants. Um, information that just states what the panels are made of, what's their, what's their longevity? Uh, information that are there any heavy metals contaminants that are in there that could break down and leak into the ground? Number eight is the fire department review. Uh, please make sure to issue them a set of the plans. Make sure they sign off and they know exactly what you're doing. They know how to, again, that's labeled in section ten, S ten, uh, S four, section eleven, I'm sorry, technical safety. Um, and just ignore them as built and just please submit them a set of plans so they understand, again, how to sign off. And number nine, uh, is please make sure the erosion control is clearly labeled. Uh, any additional sediment, uh, layout, sediment control, uh, any, any additional plans. I think that would really help the plan be able to evaluate, you know, you showed the direction of flow, but show us how you're going to put and where you're going to put those, uh, those sediment control structures. The drawings were good, just the actual physical locations and the, and the borders of those. Um, and we realized that's a preliminary estimate based on the site layout. We understand that, that there's times that the contractor may have to make adjustments, but we just want to at least get that preliminary layout so we understand. So that's the nine I had.
Emergency contact.
Yeah, that's fire department review. They have to have the emergency contact. It has to be clearly labeled.
Second, would, 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 would that be, would that also address what Bill talked about?
That same person have a major breakout up there?
Well, that's a good question because, uh, I, I envision a couple of things for the emergency contact. One, one with fire department issue. Secondly, would be, let's say a major, major erosion breakout or something like that where CEO is typically going to be the one that's going to be, become aware of that. Our, her CEO actually does work with fire department, so.
Works out.
Which may, may solve that problem, but, uh, you know, that's really, I think, uh, an important part of it is if there's a, if there's a problem of environmental issue happening, particularly during the construction phase more than, more than after it's done. It's really the construction phase where it's, uh, most critical before things are stabilized. And that, uh, who do you call if, uh, Friday evening? You know, we've had a, you know, five inch rainfall Friday afternoon and now now we know what's hitting the pan, so.
Okay, so I added number ten, emergency contact in the plan and posted on site. There you go. Is that reasonable? And again, that, that would be emergency, emergency contact being, you know, their email and phone number.
Not for the.
On site.
Not for the complaint.
Well, again, but while site construction is happening, I think it's critical to post it onsite. Or so that, so that if somebody goes there, they don't have to know where our plan is in the file to know where that contact is. I think we need to know it for, to complete a plan. But I think it needs to be posted onsite for somebody that actually interacts with it.
I get that, but I also worry about personal privacy if somebody's angry about it. I guess maybe that's.
It's an emergency like that. They could, they could, they could go, they could go get a call service. That's perfectly fine. They don't have to put their personal number up there.
Gotcha.
But that, that, they need to be able to call somebody.
During construction.
I, I mean, I think, I guess, in our office, say, Wendy down at sleep door for us forty-eight years, thirty-one, we've been here eight years collectively. But we tend to be almost first telephone call. People may, they have their problems. And, uh, very easily, we all live in micro, we're usually right off the site immediately. We give our office a call, we'll be two of us. I'd like also have, we would like also have access to that. You know, in, in case we, we get a call, we can't get the type of part, he's busy. Uh, we need to make sure that somebody, they appear immediately.
Well, it'll be in the plan package and that'll be, that publicly available. So that'll be available, but we definitely have to post it onsite so that it's available too.
Everyone in town has an emergency telephone number, one individual, everyone's per second or another starting public day. You was in emergency, whatever. Somebody could get, one individual could get an awful lot of calls.
That, that's possible. You know, that's possible.
Just got one question and one request. Um, the last, uh, the third, the last one about the C two, the erosion control measures. Can you just explain that one more time so I understand that?
Yeah, so Ed, Ed was commenting that, um, clearly labeling where, where proposed control measures are going to be installed. You had a good plan that showed that, you know, showing the breakout of how you're going to install the berm, how you're going to install the fence, but where are they specifically going to be added to the site? Not just.
You're not seeing that on C two?
I did not see that.
Oh, it's, it's, it's a little fast. I think on purple, I don't know.
Yeah, no, silt fence is totally around the site.
No, that's, that says, it says proposed fence area. That doesn't say silt.
Oh, maybe, maybe. Also fence up here. It's outside.
Okay, well, see, well, that's, I was going to say, that's great, but it's not in the legend anywhere. So it's labeled, but it's not in the legend anyway. So yeah, I would say, yeah, if you're still fed, if that's your silk bed, yeah, that's fine. So we just need to, just clean up the keys so that it should clearly label this, okay?
The, the other request I, I made is can we make the D E P permits conditional? I mean, I, in order for you to do construction, we're going to need all permits anyway. So they've got a sixty to ninety day wait. If we wait until their permits are issued, we're into February and we've got a timeline we have to keep, considering that they all need to be accepted for us to move forward. Um, does it matter if that's, what's going to come out of that, I guess? That, um, and, and I don't mind actually supplying the town with all the permits that we've, we've, uh, uh, given to the D E P, if that helps. But I'm just wondering, is there, uh, is there any other reason to wait for them, considering all of them need to be in place before we construct?
The, the only request we have is if they make a suggestion or a change to the plan, you would then need to come back to us. And that's where it becomes kind of a loop, right? So that's why it's nice to have their permits in our pocket to say they've already done the environmental assessment. They've already given you the permit by rule. You're ready to go. So now we know the environmental side as far as the state is concerned has been signed off on. So that's, that's where we've always said, I know it's, it's, which one do you go to first and how you go to that? Um, you know, my feeling, you guys, I mean, it's, it's one of those dangers. It's like, I, I'm not opposed to that not being approved before you get issued a permit. Why? I'm saying if they suggest a change, you're going to have to come back to us again. So that's the only stipulation, I guess I would say you need to be aware of.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, if that works for you folks.
Um, I, actually, I was going to suggest along that line is, uh, I think, uh, as Rick said, uh, if we leave the D E P approval outstanding and, but any changes that they might require to the plan, come back to the board. Uh, but I, I, I think it would be fair to, uh, ask that, uh, any D E P permit that is required, uh, be proved that the application has been accepted by the department. And I think there was one that was submitted, but had not been accepted yet.
I think that's the only project, right? This project.
Maybe, well, uh, yeah, I'm not sure. But I know, certainly I know one of, one of those have, had been accepted, but not by law, which I think that, that's fine. Uh, I think, uh, we should make any case that any D E P permits needed application must be in and have been accepted by, by the D E P for processing.
Yeah, we'd modify that one too.
Yeah. So we're assuming that a building permit is required before a construction agent starts for a project like this?
Yeah, and Mark, Mark won't issue that until you have those permits. That's why it's okay. But just so you understand, if D E P suggests any changes, you're going to have to come back to it. And that, just so you're aware.
I got one. We, we talked about, well, we talked about stump removal and asking for a little more specific, specific information on that. Are they going to grind them? Bolus them up? We can have that. I think that, you know, you leave it up to contractor, cheapest way, but it may not be the best way we wrote and think like that.
Seven eleven?
Yep.
Oh. That's twelve for me. Oh crap. Okay.
Did you?
Long time keeping track.
Did you modify the D E P permits or did you add that as a new one?
I added eleven if it, if it's been accepted.
Yeah, because that was also number five.
Oh, okay.
So.
And there's eleven.
Six, sorry, I was.
Can I just make a clarification on what exactly additional information we're needing for, for that specific task?
It, it sounds like what Don was requesting is just an explanation of what is the intent for removal? Is it going to be hauling it out with a stump hook? Is it going to be grinding? Is it going to be, what's the removal process that's going to be used for stump removal? That was, that was like.
What the D, you know, maybe the D E P has meant for done.
I don't know if that's in the D. Did, did that?
Well, maybe I guess, but I thought I explained that a couple of times. The, the, the trees and uplands will be removed, the stumps will be removed. And in the wetlands, it'll just be ground to grade level.
Right, we got that. It's just where the stumps are being removed. How are they being removed? Just with a bulldozer? Are they being removed? You know, I think that was the question is how they were being removed.
I would think grinding would be a lot more conducive to not happen soil erosion. The, you start in there with a bulldozer here. It's not just a stump you're going to, the whole area is going to. I don't know. Find out what they're going to do.
I guess that, uh, you know, it might be a question that I don't really get working on it, that maybe, maybe is not able to answer that yet. I think we proceed with the assumption that stump removal is going to be fiscal removal of the stuff. Then grinding may be unlikely if they're able to grind. Uh, certainly that would be beneficial, but, um, I think.
I'm sure.
If, if the, if the, if the applicant feels that that's appropriate, I think we will proceed with the assumption. Proceed with the assumption that. Uh. The stump removal will be physical removal by bulldozer backhoe, whatever. Means are actually taking the stumps out as opposed to grinding them. There there definitely is a big difference with grinding because the roots stay in place. With removal. Remove the majority of the roots, larger roots. If if that's the applicant's. Choice that that we go with that assumption, then I think that's the assumption we owe it.
Who seconded? Yes. Yeah, just us.
Okay. We have a motion. Agreed, second by Rick. Uh, that we uh table that pending. Additional information. And for the comments, if not, put to a vote, all those papers. All those calls. Vote unanimously. And we don't have to really.
No.
Okay. Oh, sure. Moving on to. Second page.
I just wanna make sure that we are on a timeline for the amendments regarding affordable housing in such regional units. You have to have that approved now. In in place with the state by the end of December. So we really have to review that tonight, so I just wanna make sure that. I don't know if you're gonna consider taking something on the order or table on something, but that has to be done tonight. I'm, I can stay as long as you need to, but it really has to be done tonight.
All right, um, my comment on this is. I suspect the second case is not gonna take too long because I think. I think the applicant already knows what we're gonna be looking for and. Where we're going to be. Uh, there are a few minor differences, but uh they buy large, a lot of the same questions are out there. So. Yeah. If the board feels that might be appropriate, we'll proceed with that if it. If it appears that we're. Into uh. Uh, too much uh on that, we can. Say it like.
I I I think uh. And I think we should ask the applicant if he was willing, if he wants further discussion, I think we have to move him in order. If he's if he's okay with the comments that we've got, then we're okay, then um I think we can move on. Um. But if he wants to have, we can do the full discussion, but we just should do that after, if we if we really have to take that down, I think we have to do it. And we have the unofficial deadline of ten o'clock, it's unofficial.
No, oh.
Maybe I'm repeating what Rick said. To me, the applicant knows what we stipulated relative to the first project. I don't see a lot of difference in the second. I think that one. Really? Yeah. I guess I'd ask the applicant, understand.
Somebody's on? No, hers is off.
Mine's on, mine's on.
Go ahead, Dave.
And again, I may repeat my first thing, but to me, the applicant understands what. What issues exist and what we're asking for with the first project. Did you see anything different in the second one than warrants, like we do in that?
I think it actually takes away, number one, the, oh wait, that's online. The access road with the turnaround, otherwise I think everything else still applies. I don't see anything new.
Unless unless there's a person, neighbor in the audience. Has something to say. I agree with you very much.
All right, well.
Stop the applicant.
All right, I I I'm I'm gonna make a decision at this point that we. Uh. Change the order of the agenda. Uh, I think the discussion of the. Two zero three uh rules. Hopefully won't take too long and. Uh, yeah. The applicant. Uh, does not. Kind of clear object. We could uh take. For a while to uh discuss our other matters and then we'll pick up on this. Uh, hopefully, I think you you. Most of what we've said. Uh, may maybe applying to words, probably not gonna take too long on that anyway. But uh, no, starting case, uh, we will. Uh. Move our discussion to. The L D two thousand. Free amendments timeline, uh. So Dawn, uh, let you go ahead and lead the discussion on that.
Sure, we've talked about pieces at different times, um, and I didn't want to barrage of a bunch of different information, but you received the red line copy. And I can make four changes to that um to the recommended language, and so this is the red line copy, highlighted what the changes are, those four changes, so. Try to make it as least kind of using this part. I think this one might be an extra copy.
Actually, that's what I just gave.
Yeah, no one just passed out, that's different than different.
If there's four changes and they're highlighted in yellow, so everything is exactly the same except for the highlighted section.
Oh. Oh, all right, well, I'll take, I'll take one with the yellow. No, I'm just, I'm just gonna spread out.
You don't have a copy of this?
Give him the yellow, he needs the yellow.
Oh, oh, you took some of the uh. Oh, so that was one, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so there.
So the changes that are proposed from the document that you previously digitally. Um, it's just for clarification, it doesn't change. The substance of the amendments. There was a number three that was in there that need to be admitted. Um, some redundancy in reference to the comprehensive plan and uh date specifics, we took that out and just interested. The current comprehensive plan, so those pieces do not change the substance of. The ordinance, clearance, clarification, or standard errors.
Dawn, I had a question on the very first. Line uh. Under Article Three zoning districts.
Yes.
You've been. And 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 dot G and eleven in parentheses.
This would be a new district. The affordable housing overly, affordable housing development overly district, it would be a new, a new district, so in the ordinance, you have the zoning districts. And then this would go on at the end of the current district.
Okay, uh, all right, all right, I see what you're saying. All right, do we have the, we we don't have the growth, the designated growth area of the comparable plan yet, right? That is the point, and that's part of this.
Yeah, there's. Timing of everything is a little tricky right now, but that is supposed to be worked out very soon.
Plan in the growth plan, growth map is not.
Right, and that this links to that.
Right.
Okay.
When I wrote this, I didn't realize that that didn't exist. Which is why the references then taken out, so it'll be.
Okay.
Sometimes it'll be updated, we'll have the information.
So the the affordable housing development, this is, um, I have a question on number three. You know, this the density bonus of two and a half times the number of allowable units per square foot for a lot, yada yada. So that exists, the two and a half times is gonna be using our existing reference, right?
Correct.
But then in section. Well. Thirteen. Two B. It says that the minimum lot size shall be five thousand square feet. For each additional dwelling unit. But if we require eighty thousand square feet, two point five reduced is not gonna be five thousand, it's gonna be.
I'm sorry. Which section are you looking at? I apologize.
Just a a section thirteen. Two B.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, everything, yeah.
It says in all zoning districts, so I thought those two seem to be contradicting each other. Do you have a plan?
I do, yep.
The affordable.
If you're.
You understand the math, it works out, you tell me.
Yeah, the affordable housing, Steve McGurran resident, the about the affordable housing overly district. Applies to specific developments that will require specific affordability affordability covenants. That are different for renting rental units and homeownership units, and there's a definition on. I don't know which pages on because I'm on my phone scrolling through. But so the density bonus is only directed to those developments. That have that affordability covenant for those units, which is described in section thirteen. It's increasing, is changing the the lot size requirement. Not attached to the affordable housing overly district, so they're two separate in this day.
Okay, so so in that case, then if the minimum lot size is now reduced down to five thousand, and then if you're in affordable housing. You would get a two point five multiplier times that. So now you're down to two thousand square foot lots.
Well, no, you still have a minimum lot size. Of my, whatever the lot size.
Wouldn't you still get the bonus of the two point five?
Yes.
So if you get the bonus of the two point five and you have a minimum lot size of five thousand, then it's two thousand square foot lot.
No, it's the lot size doesn't shrink, the amount of units that you can put on each lot is increased, the density is increased.
Okay, that's not, that's not, okay, it's a density, it's a density, what you're saying.
If you think about it for, and I'll talk about it from the side of rental housing, just because I think that's easier, so if you have a five thousand.
Okay.
If you have a five thousand. The density, we'll use even numbers for me right now, cuz it's late.
Yeah, gotcha.
And it currently allows two units on the lot at five thousand square feet, but if somebody proposes an affordable housing. Project, they would get that two point five, which two units times two point five equals five units on that five thousand square foot lot, and that can be vertically built. For power design. Marzon, if if you could, but it's not reducing the lot size needed, it's increasing the density allowing in that same square foot. Foot uh footprint. But with this, what you're talking about in section thirteen is a separate in this thing issue. That would be impacted. Five equals remains if that isn't, if that is in the growth area.
Right, I mean, and that was a question for Dawn, is can we change thirteen B? The five thousand, you know, changing all lot size to five thousand seems like. That would be a bad idea. Is that something that was mandated by the state?
No. It's not changing all lot sizes, did you say?
Yeah. It says in all other zoning districts, that's multifamily dwelling, but it says in all other zoning districts, the minimum lot size shall be. Minimum lot size required of single family dwelling, I'm saying. And then they explain the village, but it says five thousand, does that supersede our existing ordinance?
That is existing, so that five thousand is existing.
It is?
Yeah.
That's not what's on page eighteen of our ordinance?
That's an additional five thousand square feet that are required for an additional unit.
So you're looking at the table, probably the bulk and space table?
Yeah.
But if you look at.
So is is part B only applying to multifamily dwelling unit?
Correct.
Okay, that's my misread, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was that was only applying to multifamily dwellings.
And I just, it's hard because I pulled the sections out, it's not.
Well, yes, yeah, I got you, okay, sorry. That was just, that was just a question, it's done, yeah.
Uh, I did have one question uh on uh. Backing twelve G, uh. Drowning multifamily. Two spaces for every three dwelling, is that uh?
That's stated yet, that's the state, but we normally require two per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
But the state's saying with this density bonus, you can't require, you can only require two for every three units.
It doesn't make sense to me, but.
At all.
Yeah, we don't have public transportation, so that'll be fun. Spark in the street.
Yes.
If there is.
Well, I.
Mark in the wood.
I wasn't sure if it was a type or or a brain cramp, but apparently it's a brain cramp.
So they're talking about lifting barriers and and this, it must have been identified as a common barrier.
Yeah.
So possibly because of the necessity of it.
All right. Well, and the requires, and then you get into impervious cover and all those other requirements that it, you know, creates.
Yeah.
Treats environmental hazards, once you start paving your whole property.
Minimum, we were area. A hundred and ninety square feet.
Yeah, so for affordable housing, it says that public water and sewers is adequate, so it doesn't say private. So that's the assumption that it has to be hooked to public water and sewer.
Right, cuz what if you have a three bedroom septic and you're putting an accessory dwelling?
Well, you'd have to upside your septic.
And you have two more.
I'm I'm I guess.
What are septic system rules for dwelling unit, shall we know? Oh, so they do have to update their septic system. They do. Have a, okay. Yeah, so bedrooms, that's still. So if they don't, we're saying you can have more units to land area, but if you can't provide adequate septic, then the. Gotcha, rules.
You say this is from. This is affordable. Thousand, and we had that, that's when we separate. From rural, shoreline and all that, it'll be another month or?
The way it's, it, yes, but it's the way it's. Currently stated, and I know there are people from the public who have different comments they'd like to make, if you give them an opportunity. Um, is that it's where the growth district is. But you could, you could expand that, you could put it in other locations, but the way it's proposed is in the growth area. And it is only allowing it. You can overlay it on other districts, so. Expand that, you could put it in different zones, but.
It's not a separate. District in itself.
No, it's overlay, yeah, so wait, so right now, like if somebody had a rural house in the rural zone, many, many acres, they couldn't put an accessory dwelling on it. According to the way this is written right now. Uh, anywhere there's a single family home, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. So not just in the growth area, I must be lost. Well, cuz there's a couple of different things that the state has asked us to do, and one is to allow accessory dwelling units, service independent housing as well. Okay. And then the affordable housing overlay district is a different piece. Okay, that is the. The growth area. Yes, that's what's currently identified. Okay. Proposed to be the growth area. Got it. The definitions for affordable housing, this is all from the state. Okay, correct. This leaves the minimum state requirements, you can do more as a community. Um. And as a result of the comprehensive planning process, you may elect to do so. It doesn't, you can't do something now, we just wanna be careful that we. We meet the deadline so that we aren't in violation. So this, the language has to be posted tomorrow for a public hearing at your next meeting on the sixth. Geez, so if it's substantially different, that. For throw a wrench in things, but I mean, monitoring just. Did we have this ahead of time or are we just seeing this right now? You have this ahead of time, except for the the changes, okay.
It was in the package.
I picked it up this morning, I've been at a. So that's probably what I didn't get a chance to read yet.
So on page two, section G. Section H. So on page two, section G, section H. All other federal, state, and our local rules, ordinances, and codes, codes applicable to a dwelling unit. But we have ordinance that this is going to violate, so. How do we do that and leave that in there?
What would it violate?
Well, I think it just, I mean, you know, there there's a number of things like parking spaces. You're violating the parking space ordinance because you're not following it.
Well.
I I know these are kind of.
I propose a change to the parking requirements on the first page to make sure that.
So we'd have to go change the parking ordinance?
We have to change the parking requirement, so accessory dwellings require zero parking spaces, multifamily two for every three dwelling unit.
Okay, so those changes would be to our primary ordinance not to. Not. How would you supersede those? Would you go and actually edit our primary ordinance?
So this is all from the zoning ordinance?
Okay.
Yeah, this is right out of the ordinance.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, that's out of the ordinance. It's not new.
If there's conflict, Greg, it would be an unintended consequence.
Okay.
So I tried to go through it to make sure that there, you know, that it wasn't keeping with what exists or was being mended. Are you here with me, Greg? Because that's often the case, right? It was unintended consequence for what we've tried to. Eliminate that possibility. How come the dwelling unit can't be a mobile home? I struck that out. That's supposed to be struck out. Actually, a mobile home is a residential, is a dwelling unit. Okay, so that's the highlighted yellow. It already is, so it's just. So in our ordinance, it was, it was, it stated that it wasn't a dwelling and it is. So we're going to strike that from our current ordinance because it is dwelling unit. Okay, and that, so that was left over from something else. Recreational vehicles are not residential dwelling units, like an RV camper.
I have a nitpicking question on that uh section. Dwelling units uh. Room group room rooms. Designed for living quarters for only one family. I I guess I sort of struggle with. Particularly if you look at rental and maybe even a a home. It's uh, what about? Single people with roommates and so forth. I'm thinking like when I was in college, I. I was in a little house with five guys for one semester, like we weren't related, we weren't a family.
But was the, what was the resident designing? It was a single family home, yes. You had a B.
It was designed for a single family home.
It's designed for, so you were using it differently, but that doesn't change.
And we have, we have a definition of family as well. One or more persons occupying a premise and living. As a single housekeeping unit, as distinguished from a group occupying a boarding house, lodging house, or hotel. Such unit shall not exceed five persons not related by blood or marriage. So in your circumstance, if there was five of you not related. You could, it was a single family home, you could be roommate and rented. This is your current definition.
Okay.
Then I just. I I I know it happened and I, we're not saying you've got to be related to live in.
The the community has the ability to regulate short term rentals if they wish. Um, that is not part of this proposal. Yeah, as many homes as you can now. I don't want. Wait, okay, I I can't remember if he asked this this is. Sorry, but it's it's new to me, so I did not get to really look at anything. Okay, accessory dwelling unit. Lot size shall not apply for an accessory dwelling unit, but can you clarify what that means like? So does it matter? The, I'm I'm completely lost on this lot size business. So if if the lot size requirement is five thousand square feet. Yes. And you put a single family home on it, the lot does not have to be larger to put an accessory dwelling in it on. If you look at multifamily, you're going to provide, you're going to require more land area for the growth for unit. But the state's saying. That mandated by the state. This is the. That part is. Yeah. You can't require more land for the second dwelling. Even if it cuts into setbacks and. Still not going to meet setbacks. It does.
Yeah, right, it 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 still doesn't meet the setback. Still has to have the uh. Sufficient sewer and water.
Okay. So really, the the two pieces that that um. Change, we have to change in our ordinance so that you're not going against it's the parking requirement. And that you can't require any more land area.
A little confused here. Under that dwelling unit, it just how you did this. You crossed out from the first one you sent to this one, you crossed out of both of them, you crossed out the term shall not include. Okay, this, and the first one, it's underlined, it's red. And this one, it's underlined in red, crossed out.
So I was trying to make them consistent, uh dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, I struck that, so that's currently in your ordinance. So I struck a couple of them that were inconsistent and then modified the ones that were there. To make them consistent with each other. So I was at one point suggesting that we move the language from another definition. But then when I looked at it further, I said, we can't say that, we can't include a mobile home, so. I wanted to put it back in, but I didn't want to, I wanted to highlight that, I wanted to do that and not.
The words crossed out and it says yellow, you put it back in?
No, it's, it'll be gone.
It's gone, okay.
What? Question, comment?
I want you here to be updating the, for how often do the state update the numbers for the affordable housing requirements?
I do not know that. We actually had one here. The state has said that they're going to provide us with information.
I mean, obviously, it's going to be based on census block, but I mean, I don't even know, I haven't looked at our census block. Is is Windsor Hall one census block? Are we multiple? And that's going to vary a little bit.
Maybe I can come with that. If you recall, I came to the last big episode of Turnover, I'm on, and and we'll lie a little bit of that. We are what we are, it makes it plain. These are the changes we have to make now. In the plan, this is one of the things that are going to come towards, that are going to give us an opportunity to look at other. Chances to provide housing in our community. But this is a statutory requirement that we need to deal with at this point in time, as we talked in the last time. Craig, and. Craig, answer your question, whether it's one set.
We are one census block.
We are one census block with a consolidated district in downtown, and are you asking what will be updated? Are you talking about the area median income amounts?
Yeah, I mean, just some of the calculations that are done here, it it doesn't say like, are they done today and then left alone for ten years? Or are we going to do it annually or, and that's only a question because obviously the numbers of what's going to define as affordable housing is going to shift around a lot.
Yeah. So this is the the eighty percent and the hundred twenty percent come from a stat, from the statute, what is now. Public law, two thousand twenty one chapters six seventy two, which is more uh informally known as LD two thousand three.
Yes.
Right, so they they set the bar at eighty percent area median income for rental housing, a hundred twenty percent. Area median having, area median income for homeownership opportunities. Those are updated on an annual basis.
Okay.
And what what will likely be seen is, you know, so generally it's that point of movement. And then depending on how that project is, those housing opportunities are funded. Determines how often income is recertified. For example, right, so main housing candidates program that came out last year with a one time funding source. Called Home Art, America Rescue Plan at the end, that certifies income at the point of move in and and. It's a rental housing candidates are allowed to stay there from then on without income recertification. There are other housing programs where you have to be income certified every year. Um, so that income certification will depend on the program funding source. Somebody could come in and fund it with, describe it with a mor- mortgage from the bank. And just say, Winter, we'd like to take out a restrictive D covenant and say we'll make it eighty percent of very median income. Right, so there's all different ways that it could come out, but area median income is main housing releases a. By county and by uh metro area, housing metro area on an annual basis.
Okay, annual update's good. Because if they did it once every ten years, I'd be a little nervous of what would qualify. Because I I know the census, the full census is only done once every ten years, so that was really my concern, is that it was only updated when we did the full national US census. So annual is good.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chair? Uh, just, so what what the next steps would be is that this language would get posted unless there's changes you'd like to make this evening. Um, and then. There would be an official public hearing on November sixth. Um, you've been interacting with the public here. I don't know if you want to take any formal public um comment, but there will be formal public comments on the sixth. And um then it would move to the council, the next step would be to move to the council. And they would hold a public hearing and then there's a thirty day wait once they adopt it before it goes into place. That's why we have it, why I was begging you to take it tonight, because that's, we've already got it laid out very specifically.
Okay.
Do they, everybody approve of it? Everybody looked at it or?
Would anybody from the public?
Yeah, any further questions, comments?
I'd love to make a comment separate from some of the answering questions and providing guidance. I think when we.
Well, yeah.
Hey, how are you, Steve McNamara President, what's up? I think when we think about the affordable housing overlay district, right now it's defined as the growth area. And and believe the growth areas primarily the village, which has been primarily developed, if not completely, almost totally. And we may be missing an opportunity to look at areas that could be developed. To meet our housing and other community goals, establishing the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan. Right now, there are funding resources available that can invite development of appropriately sized developments for winter thinking. Eighteen units or smaller, but often when we're talking about that two point five density bonus. Right, I think density in most of our areas is two units, so that's where you're starting at five units or more. And then requiring variances from the planning board or the zoning board and appeals. But there's also resources from main housing for the first time that incense development in communities. That generally don't see development if they can't qualify for funding under the low income housing tax credit program. So we have an opportunity now when we create this uh affordable housing overlay district. To meet our community's goals, think about how we can address workforce shortage when we think about substitute teachers, bus drivers. Hospital and medical staff, right, eighty percent of area median income. I think I've talked about it here before, is those those employment professions. That's what we're talking about, are individuals who would meet those needs, and when we talk about having a fully set habitat or. Having a fully set law room, all those things, I think, uh winter aside of that wonderful recreation and enjoyable place to live. Are because we have a wonderful community built up around us of families, uh seniors, young families, the older families. All coming in and being able to live here, and this is an opportunity to help build and develop a more robust continual housing. And if we, if we keep it centralized in an area that has only been developed, we're just potentially missing an opportunity. So I encourage you to think about other appropriate areas for the overlay district.
And that's not something we have to do right now? That's something that we would add on?
Yes, that's what I understand, yes.
Okay.
Right, and the and the notes we sent to you, Dawn, as far as our request, like, I mean, my only request is that. No matter where the expansion and growth is, I, my request was to say I wanted it in a sewer and water district.
Right.
I don't want to do it outside of that, and the town, you talk about expanding that, but I feel like. Really, especially if we're increasing the density, we really have to have public sewer and water. That's that's really the way to go. Nothing, you know, nothing shy of that would be. Really ideal for expanding housing. So that was my recommendation for the comp plan is that they they. If we're going to expand it beyond the village, we're going to go make sure we don't go beyond the sewer and water district where they serve.
So if you want to, if you want to recommend something to the council other than what's proposed, you can do that. Um, you'd have to come to consensus this evening so we could change the language. So there's a couple of things. One is that. Going forward, you know, after the new year, when the comprehensive plan is adopted, the thing is sometimes you put things out there and other things come up, it's hard to get to it. So you don't want to miss an opportunity. However. We have a very small window of time to discuss this and decide what to move forward, so. I I feel like we've talked about that a lot.
Yeah, I just want to, I mean.
As far as I know, I thought we were kind of all in agreement.
We just don't have that map. We don't know.
That was the problem. They were trying to figure out last time.
We don't know what what they're talking about and where that map's going to land. That's only, that's the only comment. Is we put in our input, but we don't know what that map.
Something supposed to get us that map? Um, it's not, it's not, I'll be brave.
Yeah.
It's gonna be why, it's. Problem is, there are people that she wants in the street label, so I have to drive straight to street to street, so I don't miss. Union street, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss something, so I have to drive straight to street. And we talked before, Pat, which presence, um, we talked before about the. That you mentioned the public sewer only, some of it will be very thoughtful, but we're trying to make. Places where we can do development that isn't on the public sewer. We can shrink up sewer. Private sewer systems, because they, you know, it's been in their face, but we're much less plans based now. We're trying to do it in areas that make logical sense from heavy distance and can discuss the main main areas. We're not trying to get them. Out in the bowl top, we're trying to make it so we can have some areas of land that we can be developed. To allow for more housing. Our sewer system is pretty limited in the United States, the sewer line act. I think that was the three last ones taken.
Yeah, the the sewer line and wa- and and I think our last discussion, we really focused on the water line more than the sewer line. Right, because drinking water, so in Canterbury County, seventy four percent of the private wells have an impacted well. Meaning they have arsenic, they have radon, they have some type of contaminant they need a filter for. So, and that's only making a guess at the ones that haven't been tested, maybe part of that twenty six percent left. So that was the thought is that, well, public water has to be treated, has to be evaluated, so we're not going to be putting people on. In in, especially in when we're talking about affordable housing, in areas where they're going to need to put. Five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars worth of drinking water systems in their house and maintain those systems in order to be able to be safe. So that's why we said drinking water is absolutely critical, and that's something that we really felt, I think, pretty strongly about what we discussed it.
I had a guess that I wasn't with that meeting, so I would ask me to map, I will make sure that we go there here to that.
And and we'd love the town to expand the drinking water. You know, we would love public works to say, hey, we can run water sewer. We understand this pumps, this gravity, there's a lot of challenges for sewer, but water doesn't have quite some of those same limitations. So that's why we said, really, I think that if we want to expand those areas, we really should be thinking about bringing public water to it. So.
Well, of course, yeah, that, so, um, the other thing I'm going to bring up is section thirteen G. Um, subsections. So we talked about minimum D, which is one hundred and ninety square feet, a lot of the towns have research. Can't really AU minimum one hundred and ninety square feet. The next line says the maximum floor area. Not to exceed the core area of primary dwelling. If you have a three thousand square foot dwelling, you're going to allow AU of three thousand square feet. Then you can think about the impact, right? That feels like a lot, a lot of the towns are capping it at four hundred or eight hundred square feet. Not allowing the whole, and if you talk about the floor area of the primary dwelling. The floor area of the primary dwelling, it doesn't seem amazing though. It says the floor area. So if you have three floors. You've got a lot of floor area that you can have in A U, so I think that that one needs a little further tweaking, my opinion. I think that's all.
I'm leaving another question in for this area, so. The renovation supply, can I step back, please? Yeah, that's not a bad, that's not a bad thought to bring up though.
Greg, why aren't you talking about water being available? On an Augusta line?
Yeah, the main line runs down two oh two, so.
We don't use that.
Well, there's, there's, that's that's a main high pressure line that that services both goes from Monmet to Augusta. I don't know the particulars about Wizards Water Utility District and how they operate, but I know water exists. So it, you know, how do they tap into it? They can definitely tap into it. There's a cost associated with it. You know, and maybe.
It's cheaper than running new lines.
Well, that that's that's the thought. We should be thinking about, you know, servicing additional areas. And right now, if there's no customers. Well, I wouldn't say it's cost effective for the town to serve them, but if we're looking at putting in the development of. You know, twenty, thirty, forty units, I think somebody should really be talking and saying, what's the cost of that? And. Should we be expanding that? You know, if they're gonna put forty units, we should add water to it. Cause those are all gonna be customers paying into the Windham Utility District as well. So, you know, I know that some towns have those kind of. Plans that, you know, you don't have to pay a certain amount and then, you know, the town's gonna basically foot part of the bill. Because you're gonna be a paying customer to the utility district for X number of years. So one.
That would have to be coordinated, we could do it.
And then there could be some big logistical questions that I don't have, or nobody knows the answers to, except maybe the public works and and, you know, Augusta Water Utility District. So there could be some complications there with the size of the main line and what they can draw off and what they can't. And, um, but.
I did ask that question, we have capacity.
So I I I I I knew the answer to that, but I hate to answer that. I I I don't like answering that in open public meetings because. I know what the capacity is, but, um, yeah, it's 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 something that I I don't know if there's extra. Extra responsibilities and requirements that our public works are aware of or or maybe not aware of. Um, that if we went down that road, we'd have to cross that bridge. So I know that utility districts don't all work together well. Um, and so sometimes that's that's a hurdle in and of itself, so.
Can I come, can I ask a question about what Pat has mentioned about um G C? Maximum floor area, shotting seeds, blah, blah, blah. I feel like you're correct, but I feel like we can't make it too small. Because then what's the point of the excess? Like, people have to be able to live. You have to have a bedroom, you have to have a kitchen, a living room. Would you feel like, what do you really feel like?
Well, if you're comfortable and you have recently, you've got a three story house, say a two story house.
Yeah.
Got a footprint of thousands of square feet of primary development, primary unit. The second store is a thousand square feet, so my accessory can be two thousand square feet of her.
Right.
Is that? And to me, that's not.
That's not an accessory dwelling, that's a dwelling.
Bigger.
It's a multi level.
Right, right.
So what?
Maybe.
Do you subject a percentage to the original dwelling?
Just add of the primary unit, of of the full main level of primary. I don't know, I don't know, I don't have the answer, I just.
Sometimes the percentage of the floor area, sometimes it's an actual, just a number. And it's somewhat subjective in our writing, so.
Wish we had time to like research this better.
But if you say the floor area, you're saying potentially three structure, like the basement level, finish, the first level, second level, that's a lot.
Yes, that is an awful lot, you're right.
And and the definition is so broad that you can't really shrink it up, so.
Um.
Now, what if we use the taxes and said, you know, um, can't exceed the square footage that's taxed? And then we could say accessory dwelling unit, maybe we'd say is limited to, and the only reason I say tax is because they tax finished base. So they already know if it's a two floor, three floor house, okay, it's, you know, your twenty eight hundred square feet, cause you're, you know. Nine twenty nine, something like that. So they already know that in the accessories office, so. Why couldn't we just use that information and reference that when we, you know, if they have a half finished basement? Okay, well, that can count toward their total square feet as measured by the accessories office. And then maybe, like you said, Jamie, we then cap the accessory dwelling unit. Or maybe we just put a flat cap and say, I don't care if somebody has a five thousand. Square foot mega mansion, do we want to just say, I don't care what you have for a house, the accessory dwelling can only be a thousand square feet, period? And just flat out put a number on it. That's, I'm I'm good with that.
Say fifty percent of or?
Percentage is tough though, because then the bigger the house is, then the larger the accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
Do we want to just cap the accessory dwelling and say, you know, I like.
Hundred square feet or something like that? I feel like that's a livable.
Yeah.
Reasonable without like purposefully.
And just saying the total, so take out the provision of the size of the the maximum size is twelve hundred square feet.
Do you, Pat?
Of livable square, of of livable space.
Is it thousand square feet or twelve hundred square feet?
Yeah, I I would encourage you if you're going to be at the maximum, you would think about the reasons why somebody may have an accessory dwelling unit. There are multiple reasons. One is to generate revenue for their property to help pay a mortgage. But others are to assist with caregiving.
Yep.
So I may have a um a family member or a friend. Who has a growth rate and requires significant caregiving, and I have the skill or the availability of resources and rather than. Um, I move out of my apartment and I move in, and they have the ability to build a seventeen hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. That really makes it an attractive setup for them to be able to stay in their home in their community of choice. And for me to live there as a caregiver, right? So there are reasons why you may not want to make it so limited, because then you're disincentivizing certain behaviors. So you want to look at what is, it's, you know, between a norm and typical. Apartment and a single family home, so what are the behaviors in your incentivizing and disincentivizing? So some communities do make it very small, and I think that we would want to avoid that because. One of the things you talk about in the conference, that's talked about in the comprehensive plan that's being drafted, is the need for right size housing. And for for community members to age in their community of choice. And that means being able to age in place with community and natural supports. And accessory dwelling units are a tool and resource that allow you to do that by potentially allowing. Adult children to move back to town or, you know, uh. Peers to move back to town. So there's, this is a really valuable tool to not only increase housing stock. But to also allow people to remain in their community of choice and not have to move away to get to live near resources. But I think it's a complex question, and I wouldn't want to just say, here's a number that feels good. I would really.
Well, are you saying that this would be, like, ideally, from your experience, would be designed for a one person, two person? Or with children, like, multiple bedrooms? Like, what do you?
It could, it could be anybody. So say my parents lived in Winbrook and. Uh, I say I grew up, I did not grow up in Winbrook for full disclosure. I believe I've said this before. But I wanted to move back to Winbrook and I have my two children and my wife, and we, the housing market's really tight. And my parents had the opportunity to build an accessory dwelling unit for us to move into. Or say they recognized that they wanted to move into single thing, single floor living. So they built an accessory dwelling unit that was a thousand fifteen hundred square feet of single floor living. And we moved it actually into the main house, right? That is a ladder, it's possible. So it could be for families, it could be for single individuals, it could be for. It it really can fit a variety of needs from renters, homeowners, families, or caregivers. Um, for unrelated unknown individuals. So I think that it's a complex issue and and these are. Really nuanced conversations that I know everybody wants to give a lot of time and thought to. I mean, and as Ed talked about before, we are, and as Don is kind of letting with this, there's a short runway. But Helen pushing us towards it. So understanding that this is probably a conversation that when there are not so many things on the plate. You talk about over a period of time acknowledging that people will probably be starting to come here. That develop accessory dwelling units, that's just happened in other communities, they're gonna try and develop it, so.
Yeah, I I do, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, but I just think that, you know, when you said seventeen hundred, that just sounds large to me, you know, I know, like. Granite Hill Estates, like, the biggest unit they have, I think, is like eleven fifty. And those are two bedrooms, living room, dining room, kitchen, um, you know, my, 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 my shrimp parents lived there, so it's like, yeah, I know. What's there? They had the biggest unit that that they made. And I'm saying it felt really spacious. One floor living slab, and it was just under twelve hundred square feet. So I liked that number as being a reasonable number, I think. I think, I think six hundred, five hundred, four hundred, those numbers sound really scary to me. Where a thousand, twelve hundred sounds reasonable, like, two thousand sounds like, that's another whole house.
Yeah.
That just, that that's really, that's really pushing that other boundary versus what I think you just kind of listed is those options. You know, I think it's, I think those are great options, you know, for bringing a child back that, you know, wants to live in Winbrook. And they have a family, and you say, okay, but then the parents say, okay, well, you take the house, I'll take the accessory dwelling or whatever.
Yeah, I don't think we could do this without putting that in there. How do you release this to the public?
Well, I mean, right now, it says it just can't be bigger than the than the primary dwelling.
Right, well, exactly, we can still get a mid mansion.
Because I, exactly, I think that that sets it, that that unfortunately sets it. And I don't have a problem with it. Maybe, maybe they have a thousand square foot house. That means they can't make it any bigger.
Yeah.
If we set it at twelve hundred, they can make it twelve hundred. So, sorry, go ahead.
Back in the seventies, Hudson and F H A had a huge program in this country. Used to found script with lower income. Family home. And and I didn't consider myself back then. And a thousand square feet can be made into a nice home for a family of, in these cases, with three children and a cousin boy. And it was a nice home. Uh, so I think a thousand square foot is very dual. Most of had basements, some of them were split four, so they had the advantage of expanding in a basement as well. But they're a thousand square foot home and, um. Again, I saw and designed and built a lot of them. They were great homes, so I think a thousand was the next one. So, but what I did is.
So do we have to decide on that then?
Well, I think we have to decide on the number, verbiage. We either put a number in or do we leave it as is? And I think, I don't know, it sounds like we all. Like the idea of a number over what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No more than fifteen hundred, no more than two thousand. And right now, that could be, gets you, gets you to get this done. And then you come back, you look at it, again, plot size, setback, and then you start determining how much your square should have. So could be in how much land there is.
Yeah, and I'm a little, I'm a little more conservative than that. Can we put it in place? And then they build a bunch of two thousand, you're like.
Yeah, by the time we have a ten.
I I I'd rather pick something in the middle.
I'd rather go, I'd rather go lower.
Yeah.
I I suggest as. Larger than the existing house, but not to exceed fifteen hundred. I think that's, when you're big enough for an accessory dwelling. Uh, you get much bigger than that, as you're you're just looking at multi-family homes, I mean. You know, the spaces, you know. I I don't know what the, I I assumed what the intent of this legislation was, that. I brought this up was exactly what we talked about, you know, an aging parent or. Our children or something moving in and, you know, kind of has quote unquote accessories. That fifteen hundred is very generous and. You know, and, you know, that's square feet, whether it's. If it's two stories, it's seven fifty per. Per story. Uh, so fifteen hundred square feet plus base.
I'd be okay with that. I like lower, but I'll, I'm there, I can do it.
Do you still want to leave in the provision of the existing size? I mean, if.
I would say, yeah, don't figure on the existing size, because. It's not exactly an accessory structure.
It's just a lot bigger than.
If you've got a, you know, thousand foot house now, dude, say, well, I'll pop a fifteen hundred. That.
No, just.
No, I mean, no, it's not garage.
They couldn't have a garage on.
No, I think they could have a garage. That wouldn't, that's not living space.
A garage, yeah.
Twelve hundred and that is a single carport. Yeah. Horrible. That's a good shot.
So what if it's a really tiny little house already, though, only eight hundred? We would say that's it? You can't go more than that for your accessory dwelling?
I guess the.
Even though that could become their main dwelling.
House, and that's not really the intent of this.
How about that minimum?
The maximum.
Oh, I see.
Maximum, yeah. One ninety, that's, that's a shame.
By the way, there's an active shooter in Lewiston, they have a problem.
Well.
Ten people were killed.
What?
Yeah.
How many?
Ten people so far. So far, and multiple other people injured.
Okay, well.
Motion in order.
All right.
Okay, that's why I was just gonna say, where are we at? We uh, are we ready to uh. Agree on this with a.
Yeah.
With a cap?
I have.
Yeah, I go.
I mean, I I really would prefer twelve hundred or something, but I'm not gonna, if everybody else wants to do the fifteen hundred, I'm not gonna.
I wouldn't fight.
Argue it.
I was gonna say fifteen thousand still lies to me. I like.
It does, yeah.
All right.
I like we're talking twelve hundred.
I'll modify it, yeah.
Okay, so we could, whichever is greater or whichever is less?
No, uh, no.
We're gonna keep the maximum cannot exceed the floor area.
The lesser of existing house or a hundred.
We're going with twelve, okay.
Limited to the existing house. I think twelve hundred.
No, well, this is an accessory structure. If you're making accessory structure bigger than the main structure.
Yes.
It'd be small.
It's gonna be no bigger.
The main house becomes the accessory.
Okay, so I don't know, we need to make a motion or or, of course, satisfy that we're good to go with this for that change?
Give me the directive, I will modify the language based on this discussion.
Yep.
Um, those highlighted areas will will be incorporated. And we will get this posted for public hearing on the sixth of November.
Okay, do I hear a motion to?
Go move.
All right, I hear it second.
Yeah.
Wow.
All right, four E, Don, um, you gotta, water's crossed out, you gotta get rid of that, you need the water in. Four E.
Yeah.
Oh, just, that's just the editorial thing, when you do. I think you got, you were trying to get rid of the little weird three, and I think water went. That's all.
I got you.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
I only highlight the three.
Yeah, I did.
No, I I missed that too.
Uh, Rick and then Ed.
Okay.
Even my call for texting me.
Okay.
Everybody out of state.
We all agree?
Okay.
All all in favor?
All right, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, now this will be.
Near intended, I'm like.
Yeah.
My brain starts to go to bed.
Okay.
All right. So we have a minute.
Don, this this will be incorporated into our decision order.
Yes, yes, well.
Now, with apologies to the.
A lot more of these.
We will go back and. Consider. Case twenty three dash zero eight, consideration request for. Woodford Lake Region Chamber. Glenn Walker or, uh, but. A U when I drive LLC, but IVS Engineering LLC agent for conditional youth driven. Transpike those nine ninety five, K W S D commercial dollar raise, rural zone located at. When I drive on town map two lots six I J and A. You see.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, um, we we don't, I'll assume that all the stuff we talked about before. And a lot of those, they agree, they do apply to this project as far as updates. So I'll just give a quick summary, basically the same thing, one megabyte or just under one mix system. Um, it's all forested, it's the, at the end of the commerce park there. Um, there's a very short driveway in, and again, very limited on space as far as where we could um. Put this, cause there's wetlands, a lot of wetlands up in this, the property actually goes way up into here and the three parcels right here. So we stayed away from a lot of these wetlands, there's a couple of prairie streams up there. Uh, we're doing the same thing over here. Um, this is required at one level. Uh we're doing the same thing over here. Um this did require one level tier up. Which is uh uh you can't go over an acre of wetland, so we're right there. Um we did uh also go, one of the avoidance measures was there is a thermal pool here, it's not significant. But we said, you know, we're gonna try to stay out of that as far as the panel, we will clear, um but we will stay out of panels. Again, it's the same um fenced in area, uh trying to keep the buffer. Um yeah, so very similar in nature, I guess, presenting like odd. Comments that maybe are specific to this one project that we need to discuss, that we didn't. I just had one, just one other quick thing. This uh and Bill mentioned it too, I know we've looked at it a little bit, the business park was part of a site license. And I don't know when it was, but I know it's part of a site license from they developed it. Uh two of the three parcels that we had were not part of that and were not um. Uh it's my understanding we're not, we need to amend the site license of the part to do what we're doing. Because they weren't even part of that initial one. So it's my understanding that we don't need to amend that. Uh again, we put in a stormwater PBR, a decommissioning permit, a tier two nerve permit. To DEP, so all the permits that we understand, all those permits haven't been accepted like Turkey Lane was. But they were also been at the same time, so I expect this could be a timing issue when we get a letter. I've actually asked, I had contact with the DEP uh project manager and said, hey, can you take this one on as well? To be a little efficient, you're seeing the same projects, it's in the same town, same engineer, maybe a little more efficient, so I I expect. The same letter, again, I assume all the other. You know, uh idea of all the permits need to be issued and granted before any kind of construction can begin, so. But, yeah, so that's what I have, I guess, for a summary.
Rick's got a question. She still touches on here, is that because of nature of the land or?
You don't see self emphasis on D two?
No, you see, no, not on D two.
Oh, I didn't look on D one.
Oh, it should be on D two.
Uh no.
What is that blue, what is that?
I'll pencil right next to the uh.
I see right now. Oh, wow, okay, yeah, look for it, yeah. Different color, yeah, it's a different color, but it's again, it's not in the key, so.
It's not in the key.
Yeah, that's.
Same texture as the chain as well, yeah.
Is there anything different? But the only, the only thing I added for this one was just a verification, the only thing I added for this one was a verification that none of the folks, especially on the. On the west side exceeded ten percent. I don't think so based on the contours, but it was kind of hard to tell, it gets closed.
Yeah, we didn't find any, they were closed while we.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I noticed in the narrative, uh you did say there was nothing exceeded exceeded ten.
Okay, so I took it, okay, I took it, I I I didn't see that in the narrative, so thank you.
I'm sorry, so you don't need verification, it is?
No, that's it, if if he put it in there, then it's, then it's good. That's just, it's a requirement, our sole ordinance is that they have to have a specific. There's a specific requirement on steep slopes and that requires secondary containment, which is not primary and that's really only for steep slopes. Because regardless, you know, if it's, if it's meadow, deep slopes, he doesn't care if it's deep. So that was the idea of putting that stipulation, any plot that goes over ten percent, we want to be able to see there's there's specific management plan. Of that, which is usually a secondary containment, some type of berm, some type of settling pond, something to contain that stormwater before it can travel further. As you know, someplace where it's flat.
You're right, do look, can I ask you a question? Uh there's a shuttle here relative to the, 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 relative to Turkey Lane. They have not accepted very, applications are in, but they have not accepted.
Right. Yeah, and 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 Ed was very clear, he wants to make sure they're accepted before we see the case. Because that way, not not that they're approved, but just accepted, so that that means that all of his information, D P, that yep, everything here for us to do our job.
Is that in the other motion?
That's in the other motion as well.
Yeah, that's certainly that's in the other motion as well, so I think that was.
So in order for Greg to make the motion, I'll check in this, this is all based on the.
Yeah, the only thing, the only difference is number one was the access road. I think everything else.
I, yeah, I I that's how I'm looking at it, it's uh.
I didn't.
Pretty, pretty much.
Same thing.
How much the, what's it, yeah?
Yeah, I was looking down our list and didn't see anything that changes it. I'll make one more comment, well, I was, while you guys were looking at the other uh business there, I look back at the future analysis. And um they didn't study it at zero and fifteen feet. Is it, is the new organs twenty, is it twenty five? Twenty five, yeah, because you're not allowed to cut anything lower than twenty five, the thought was that's going to be. That's going to be more realistic, where the zero is more conservative and the twenty five would be more realistic of what you would see. Yeah, I'm not sure why they, they, you could have missed that in the words, or maybe it was just that, because they did that um a few months ago, so. That may be something I have to revisit. I will say, when I did notice that, there's a, there is some red. That is to the west that looks like it's that mountain, uh.
Pisco.
Pisco, yeah, um and they do talk about that in the. In the report. In the report, they don't specify it's a mountain, but there's one ridge there, I mean, I think we can assume that anyway, or I could have then. Uh make sure that's pointing out. Yeah, I was gonna say, just. Yeah, the.
I never actually thought about that.
The fire tower on Mount Pisco would be.
How many feet up is that? Because that's where you go.
It's an extra fifty feet or forty five feet at least.
Oh my lord, how come we haven't thought of this?
Make a motion.
Wait, hold on, can we add that? What do we do?
What?
We need that extra fifty feet up for your view shed to see what you're looking at.
That assumes somebody goes up on top of Mount Pisco.
I go on top.
If somebody goes up on top.
But somebody could go climb a tree too and they'd be fifty feet off the ground.
Well, that's different, it's not a.
Be in their house on the second floor and, you know, thirty feet off the ground. So I mean, you you the idea is.
Point about Piska of checking is because you're climbing that fire tower, because that's the view, that's the famous view.
Yeah, I'd be looking for solar.
Let's challenge.
Could I ask you a question?
Sorry, go ahead.
This, this site, um I believe is similarly wooded uh to the other one. Uh more or less per curate trees.
That's my understanding, yeah.
And uh so again, we're we're in the same situation where we're dealing with a stump removal and. Uh with the exception of the well and vegetation areas.
Same thing, yeah.
Okay, um and uh. Um yeah, I I don't think we've missed much other than that turnaround question. So uh. Who wants to go ahead and make that motion?
Greg, just reread everything except for number.
Everything again, or can you guys?
I think we can go ahead and just say everything but number one.
Do, do, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got it. Do you? I make a motion in case twenty three oh eight. Um uh using the same conditions as in case twenty three oh seven. Um with the exception of item number one, so item two through eleven, uh repeated again. Be table uh until those additional uh data and requirements are met.
Rick, second here, uh all those in favor? I, just quickly, uh next meeting is evening, you ready?
Right.
And they may or may not be on the agenda. Bombs on the agenda.
Bombs on the agenda, then I am setting one tomorrow if it completes, there might be another.
And then we have to do the other organs too, right? The mining one?
Not till the, not to December sixth.
Oh, okay.
That's when Joel's coming back.
Okay.
And so if we just start, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, that's okay.
That's what we know right now. That's what we know on the agenda right now.
Yeah, right now, yes.
And we're not doing Thanksgiving Eve, but are we gonna go ahead and add another one in to get some additional? We are doing that?
We added the twenty ninth, that was Oregon's talk, right?
Okay.
I think that's what I put up.
Right.
What were you doing?
Yeah.
Meeting again.
All right.
I'd just like to tell you, Shane, you did a nice job.
Yeah, he's like, I couldn't power from everything you said, but.
Yeah.
Now it was.
No.
Twenty one, yeah, Wednesday, yep.
I apologize, I apologize for putting you off, so.
I know, it is what it is, yeah.
We got precious on that.
You have, yeah, you have uh some intention here clearly, you need to make sure that.
You're not driving into Lewiston, are you?
No, head back here tonight.
Oh, there you go.
Here, wow.
You you drive in back tonight.
Yeah. How are you?
Bye.
Thank you, goodnight.
Definitely.
Go hug your loved ones.
It's called pairs.
I don't know what they're talking about.
Used to be you could carry your rifle.
How far is that?
I know.
I can't do that anymore. No, not at all.
Oh, thanks for putting that mother bitch, do you want to keep that for your, for the town office?